All right, we are back. We are on agenda item number 60. I'll read it into the record. There's two parts. 60A is a public hearing to adopt ordinance number 2024-030 approving a development of critical concern master development order for property located south of Clark Road and east of Lorraine Road, Sarasota, for a village planned development of up to 6,576 residential units, 120,000 square feet of office use, and 250,000 square feet of commercial retail uses. And 60B is also a public hearing to adopt ordinance number 2024-031 approving rezone petition number 23-25 for property located south of Clark Road and west of Lorraine Road, Sarasota, from OUE1 to OUR to VPD. And I believe you're going to get us started here, Matt, this morning, or this afternoon, I should say?
Good afternoon, Chair Commissioners, for the record. I am Matt Osterhau. I'm the Director of Sarasota County's Planning and Development Services Department. Before I introduce our planning staff to come up and give the introduction, just wanted to enter into the record that I conducted individual Commissioner meetings, one-on-one meetings, and we talked about the contents of the staff report. And with that, I'm going to introduce Anna Messina, who's going to kick us off.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, for the record. My name is Anna Messina, Planner with Sarasota County Planning and Development Services, and I have signed a speaker's card. The petition before you today is requested by applicant 3H Ranch LLC and Sue Investment Partners LLC, who are represented by Ms. Katie Labarre of Stantec as the agent. Ms. Labarre and her team will first provide a presentation on behalf of the applicant. Afterwards, I will return and provide staff's presentation, and then we can address also any questions that the board may have. Before I bring Ms. Labarre to the podium, I just want to enter into the record that after publication of the staff report, we have received additional correspondence from the public. Copies of this have been given to the board, but we will offer -- we're also going to give a copy to the clerk. With that, Ms. Katie Labarre.
If you could pause, Mr. Neal, Commissioner Nunder.
Chair, just a quick ask here. During applicant's presentation, I was hoping that as they dive into stormwater, as I assume they will, if I might be able to stop the clock, perhaps ask some questions. This is a very large application that we're going through. I think it would be prudent to really be able to ask the questions that we all might have and maybe dive a little deeper.
Oh, yeah, of course. We're not going to treat this any different than any other public hearing. We'll have applicant presentation of 20 minutes. If questions from this board, stop the clock, and that'll apply to staff and rebuttal time as well. So, yeah, with that, the applicant is recognized for 20 minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. About 55,000 people live in homes that my company's built over the past 54 years in Sarasota and Manatee County. No home ever built by Neal has ever flooded by reasons of rising water. Of the 10,000 homes we had under warranty last week, we had 73 warranty calls, that's seven tenths of 1%, and about 200 total calls. We did services on homes, we did service on homes, back to 2002. This property is a much different property than the one we just heard about. That is, the property has about 20 feet of elevation between the top, about 34 feet, and about the bottom, about 14 feet. It's in no restricted basin. It's not in the Philippi Basin, it's not in the Kalpan Basin. For the most part, it has its own basin, that is the middle fork of South Creek. And I would ask you to look at it quite differently than the previous application. It's new and virgin property, which has a very extensive design for its stormwater and lots of open space. I have with me the consulting firm of Stantec and the one of Kimley-Horn and our longtime General Counsel, Ed Vogler, since 1983. Before I introduce them, I will say that our firm employs about 400 people in this community. We have about 900 trade partners working on our jobs every day. We add about $1 billion a year to our local tax rolls. We contribute about $90 million of impact in facility investment fees, and we add about $15 million of property tax evaluation to Sarasota and Manatee Counties every year. As always, we've done lots of work with our neighbors, particularly those on Ibis Street. Ivory, Katie, and I have attended 18 neighborhood meetings and countless citizen meetings on all four sides of this property, which has been, is actually fully surrounded by development. Our biggest issue prior to two weeks ago was Ibis Street. We managed the street, managed the speeds, followed speeding dump trucks, participated in 18 community meetings, but then the rains came. Before Katie goes over the plan, I wish to point out that we at Neal have the right to buy from Mr. Hales, who I'll introduce in one minute, the 676 acres at this time, roughly a quarter of the property. In the next 18 months, we plan to start about 700 homes in a golf and country club community without the golf. We plan to build about 1,100 homes of the 6,576. The remaining will be owned by Mr. Hales. The Hales family's owned this property for 61 years. Mr. Hales runs a multi-generational family agricultural business from Okeechobee. I'd like him to talk about his property first. John Hales.
Good afternoon. I'm John Hales. 3H Ranch is owned by my family. We have acting members that are in 3H Ranch. I've been in the agricultural business all my life, straight out of high school, never went to college, went to work. My grandchildren today, my oldest grandson being 12, are very active in the agricultural business, in the ranching business. My family's been in the -- my grandfather started in Miami in the dairy business. My dad followed, moved towards the center of the state, near Okeechobee, had a dairy. Retired from the dairy business, went into the beef business. I came along, hooked up, went into the beef business. We have expanded. It is our primary business. It is our business. I say "primary," it is my business. My children have followed in the footsteps. I have a daughter and son, my son who's here with me, my daughter who was planning to come and said, "Dad, we got problems." I said, "Fix problems. We'll come talk to the county commissioners." In saying that, we have been ranching and are going to continue to ranch, and in no way am I a developer, and in no way do I want to be a developer in any way or any aspect. And I am not in any aspect. I just want to share with the Commission, my dad bought this piece of property approximately 61 years old. I'm 62. As we went on, when the county dump wanted to put in their county dump, our place was the number-one place. It was the number-one on their hit site. We chose not to even entertain conversations of selling to the dump because we have a great respect for our land. We have been good stewards of our land. What has happened to us, where we're at today, we have ranched here forever. We know how much Sarasota has changed. It has changed greatly, and I believe it will continue to change. I don't see how everything has to move forward, needs to move forward correctly. I agree. In saying that, I sold 45 acres, can't tell you how long ago, five, six years ago, don't quote me on that, to developers who came in and have put in Hawkstone, which has been approved, kind of on the side of my ranch. I kept my ranch together. And the main reason I sold that piece of land was so I could fund the efforts to get to here, okay? In saying that, I was very particular when I picked a developer to work with. I've spoken with many of them. My primary residence is in Okeechobee, Florida. And as I talked to them, and as I talked to Mr. Neal for three months, every week I had him drive over to my house, sit at my kitchen table with myself, my children, my wife, and we discussed what we wanted to see from our land and what we expected as far as the development. We were very big on wildlife corridors, very big on open space, and most of all, we wanted a development that we felt would be a beautiful development. I drove around, I looked at all Mr. Neal's developments, all the things that we've done, and my family and I, all joint, decided to venture with Mr. Neal. He talks about having a contract on a right to buy some of my land, contracts, so on and so forth. And I wanted to share that before we started because I'm six -- my grandchildren are fifth generation. We've been in South Florida forever doing this. I want to tell you this from personal experience. Debbie was a rough storm, okay? I have other holdings, leases, all over the place, and it's hit us in some areas, some areas it didn't. But one thing that I want the Commission to know is we are stocked with cattle there that I own. I don't lease it, I operate it. After Debbie, first thing we do, we go to every area that got hit hard. I think we have 19 inches of fall. All our water, all our water, as it leaves the place, and I have to look here, goes into what's called South Creek, out the back end, all the way, no man's land in essence, for a while, until it goes under 75. And when I got there, and when we got there, I did not have to rotate cattle to different pastures. I've had areas where they can't stand in water. And that place never flooded, and the water left during Debbie. Personal eyewitness. Sorry, didn't mean to take so long.
No worse.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Katie Labarre, Certified Planner with Stantec, representing Neal Communities, and I have signed a speaker's card. You heard some personal experience regarding the land. We also have our civil engineer here, who you will hear from here shortly, to talk in greater detail about stormwater management. But my role right now is to talk about land use. So I'm going to dive in and work through the land use components very quickly. We have two applications before you today, a development of critical concern and a rezone to planned development, planned village development. And the rezone is to change the zoning from open use rural and open use estate to VPD or Village Planned Development. The development of critical concern process is rigorous, and it requires a significant amount of data and analysis that's provided to staff for consideration. A few key elements that are evaluated include land use, appropriate timing of development, compatibility, transportation, environmental drainage, education, and fiscal neutrality. We've been in the review process for just over a year, and both applications have been fully vetted by your capable staff. This property, 3H Ranch, is located on the south side of Clark Road, east of I-75 and west of Sky Ranch. The site's approximately 2,727 acres, and is currently either vacant or used for cattle grazing, just as you heard a moment ago. 3H Ranch is in the village and greenway resource management areas of the 2050 Plan, and it's in the rural future land use category. As you may know, 3H Ranch is part of the Clark Road properties. Some distinctions between Clark Road properties and VPD zoning include the minimum density is calculated at two dwelling units per gross acre. Open space can be reduced from 50% to 33% when net ecological benefit is demonstrated, substantial connected open space networks are achieved, and there is an ecological enhancement of the open space network project-wide. Furthermore, village and neighborhood centers can be located at or near the perimeter of the developed area, and residential and non-residential village center land use mix can be determined on a case-by-case basis with a market study. The existing zoning, as I said, is OUE1 or open use estate and open use rural, and our proposed zoning is village planned development. The map to the left, or it's going to be, the map on your screen shows the extent of development that extends all around 3H Ranch. Are you not getting a presentation?
Can you pause the clock for a minute? There hasn't been a presentation since the beginning for us.
Great. We've had beautiful imagery for you. So, we'll make sure that it's available to you.
If you want to click back a couple slides, just for one, just to make part of the record. Is that slide 10 of 24?
I was on slide 10 of 24. So, how about I show you, this is just for, you know, very quick follow-up. This is the resource management area showing how much of the site is village. You see the greenway and the southern reaches of the property, and then the future land use category is rural. I talked about, I had a lot of text regarding VPD versus the Clark Road properties, but I spoke most of that into the record. And then this is existing zoning, what the zoning is today versus proposed zoning, which as you can see, it is VPD with a GU for the proposed Lorraine Road school site. And you also see that VPD exists both to the west and to the east of this property.
Okay, great. Yeah, we'll start the clock again. I'm sure there's going to be a number of questions, but let's at least get it in the record.
Okay. No, thank you for that, and I'm glad we have the presentation up now. So this map that is now on your screen shows the extent of development within this region. It shows the proximity of this site to I-75 and provides a clear picture of existing and future transportation infrastructure in the region. The site is approximately eight miles to Siesta Key, 12 miles to downtown Sarasota, 16 miles to downtown Venice, near multiple planned village neighborhoods, particularly Sky Ranch and Hyatt Ranch to the east, Grand Lakes and Strazera to the west. And finally, the site is located, like I said, near the Lorraine K-8 school, which is slated to be open at the beginning of next school year, next August. Proposed density for 3H Ranch is determined by two dwelling units per gross acre rather than via transfer of development rights that would be used for a typical village designated property. And so this was, again, the breakdown of how we calculate density. We've got base density, and then we have additional density that can be provided pursuant to the comprehensive plan. The Binding Development Concept Plan, which is on the slide before you, helps to show the amount of developed area, which is shown in yellow versus open space, which is shown in varying shades of green. This plan contemplates a maximum unit count of 6,576 residential homes, and the mix of development will be anything ranging from an estate house to a traditional apartment. We have 370,000 square feet of non-residential uses proposed within neighborhood centers and village centers identified on the Development Concept Plan. And then finally, the DCP illustrates the provision of open space, preservation of native habitat, wildlife corridors, and parks, village and neighborhood centers, and trails. The green belts and greenways are two very significant components of the 2050 regulations, and the Unified Development Code allows certain exceptions to the 500-foot green belt requirement when certain conditions exist so that we can evaluate adjacent properties and tailor those green belts to address compatibility. With this application, we requested six exceptions to the green belt requirements, and I'm going to walk through them for you. The green belts along Clark Road is proposed to have no green belt adjacent to the Activity Center, which will be the commercial area for this project. We want to make sure that there's visibility from Clark Road so that the different non-residential users and tenants have visibility from the roadway. We propose a minimum 50-foot green belt where adjacent to village development. The green belt along the northern property line that does not abut Clark Road is proposed to also be 50 feet. Housing types within these neighborhoods that are adjacent to that northern edge will contain residential unit types that are of similar size and character and form to the north of the property, and so there will be consistency. The west property line abuts Ibis Street. For that green belt, we propose a variable width buffer that ranges from 50 feet to 500 feet. The buffer is proposed to be heavily vegetated, reaching up to 70% opacity. The red areas that you see on the screen represent the variability in the buffer, and you'll note that there's a significant portion of the buffer that exceeds 50 feet in many cases. Our team have worked diligently with concerned residents and adjacent property owners, and the proposed buffer configuration along Ibis is a result of that close coordination. Finally, the south and east property lines are proposed to have no green belt because the south property line is adjacent to the greenway, and the east property line is either adjacent to Lorraine Road or adjacent to the greenway. 3H Ranch will boast up to 14 unique neighborhoods with six different housing types identified on the Master Land Use Plan, and a minimum of one village center. Neighborhood centers will be located within a one-quarter mile walking distance or radius from most of the homes, and 170 acres of parks and trails will be set aside for residential use. Regarding mobility, the plan shows multi-use trails that will connect neighborhoods to one another, to village centers, and to other nearby amenities. Bike lanes and multi-use trails are planned along Lorraine Road, and we've incorporated alternative roadway design options to promote flexibility over the life of this community. Finally, the extension of the regional road network will promote connectivity, particularly with the extension of Dove Avenue and Lorraine Road. It's my professional opinion as a certified planner that this application complies with the requirements of the Comprehensive Plan and Unified Development Code. And with that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Alec Hoffner with Kimley-Horn to discuss the environmental benefits of this project.
Thank you, Katie. Good afternoon. My name is Alec Hoffner. I'm with Kimley-Horn, and I'm the environmental consultant working on the project, and I've signed a speaker's card. So it's my job today to describe to you how the applicant is providing a net ecological benefit through the proposed project that justifies the reduction of open space from 50 to 33%. I want to start off by describing the project area. This is an active cattle ranch. The majority of the property has been cleared of native habitat to great improved pastures, and these pastures have been grazed for many years, as Mr. Hales told you earlier. So the native habitat remaining is sparse, but it does include some marsh, hardwood wetlands, as well as areas of pine flatwoods, and there's some mesocamac uplands on the site. But the bottom line is there's limited native habitat on the site to preserve. So, let's go to the slide. The applicant must demonstrate net ecological benefit to reduce open space from 50 to 33%. So on the Hales Ranch project, the 33% open space will be about 900 acres. This will include greenway, green belts, wildlife corridors, and regional connections. And I want to go and say this, maybe the most important thing is that we have worked with county staff, and they have determined that this project does meet that net ecological benefit criteria. So we're very pleased about that. So, let's talk about the specifics of the project. At the project completion, there'll be 672 acres of native and restored habitats. This is 25% of the project area, and this is really important. It's 234 acres more than exists today. So we're going to have more native habitat when we're done than exists today. There's also 244 acres of wetland enhancement on-site, okay? And so this is 158 acres more than what would be required for mitigation for some wetland impacts that are proposed. So this is over and above what would be required for mitigation. So let's talk about the benefits of the plan. There's going to be creation of a significant wildlife corridor from the north property boundary all the way to the south. There's also going to be some wildlife corridors from east to west. These are going to be a minimum of 100 feet and as wide as 800 feet in width. And we're also, through these corridors, we're connecting the onsite habitats to adjacent offsite native habitats, so there'll be connectivity there. And then, I think this is a really important point as well. The Greenway RMA, which is on the very southern portion of the project area, it's currently mostly improved pasture, but in the post-development condition, we're completely restoring that area, so it'll be native habitat when we're done. So, in my professional opinion, the project meets all codes and ordinance of Sarasota County. That concludes my portion of the presentation, and now I'd like to turn it over to Frank Domingo to discuss traffic. Thank you.
In the interest of time, we're turning it over to Jeremy Arnold with Atwell to speak about stormwater.
Good afternoon. Looks like we're getting tight on time. Jeremy Arnold, Atwell, Vice President, Project Engineer, over 20 years' experience in real estate land development, Southwest Florida. We can talk about drainage, you know, I'll get right into it. You know, it all starts with, you know, using the best available information that we have, which is the Sarasota County models and their watersheds. The subject property is, you know, 2,700 acres, Clark Road to the south, 3.89 miles due south. It falls about 19 feet from Clark Road down. The property is part of two of the Sarasota County watershed models. The Little Sarasota Bay encompasses about 2,400 acres of the subject property, with the balance 350 acres or so, when the Donna Bay. Little Sarasota Bay portion, which is the majority of the site, drains south to southwest into South Creek.
Jeremy, if you could pause for just one second.
Thank you.
I don't think, I'm not speaking for any other Commissioners, but I'm sure this is going to be a topic that we're going to want to expand on, either questions or during the 20-minute presentation. Thoughts from the board? I want to hear this presentation.
Chair, yeah, if I may, I would love to hear, and, you know, within an hour, say, reasonable time, to hear more about stormwater.
Right.
You know, it's certainly the topic of the day here. Although, if I may, while I have the microphone, I did hear something from your wetland mitigation that kind of tickled my brain. I'd like to go back to that portion too later because I think there's something there of value that I heard that I don't know that I've heard before.
Okay.
But yes, Chair, with your permission, I would like to, 10 minutes, maybe?
Oh, there's no question. You know, with this being a development of critical concern and a master development order, it's 15 minutes to get this right is important to me, and I'm not, again, speaking for any other Commissioners, but I'm sure it's common sense here. Specifically, just one footnote to this, I did get a number of cards after the break. They're probably at four hours of public comment. So for an additional 15 minutes to address maybe some of the concerns of this, these folks, I think it's time well spent. We'll be reasonable about it. Let's do 15 minutes, and we'll reevaluate at that point, and then I got to go back, I want to go back on a couple, just questions on the buffers, but please, continue.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you for the extra time. I think it's going to be well needed. So back to, you know, basically how we start. You know, we start with the existing conditions. We use the existing models available. Like I said, the subject property's 2,700 acres, has quite a bit of fall across it from north to south, about 19 feet. It's part of the two basins, Little Sarasota Bay and the Donna Bay models, 2,400 acres. Like I said, go south to southwest to South Creek, to ultimately under I-75 to Oscar Sheriff State Park, and then to the bay. 15% of it, you know, 350 acres, kind of interacts with Sky Ranch, which is the adjacent project, which we happen to be the engineers for as well. So we've worked on that one since, gosh, 2016, it seems like. And so those projects, you know, will work in unison. They both kind of share the same modeling. Sky Ranch, majority of that project is in Donna Bay, a small portion of it is in Little Sarasota Bay, and this is kind of inverse of that. Once we get through the existing conditions and we've developed that model, you know, that's the start of developing the post-development model, or the, you know, pre-development, post-development conditions that we analyze. So, we're required to maintain the existing or historical drainage patterns, and we're also not allowed to cause adverse effects upstream or downstream. That's by the Sarasota County Stormwater Manual, UDC, and also Southwest Forte Water Management District. You know, the county, since 1992, when it was established, has the basin models, and that's what we use to design our subject sites, too. We've been doing it, I've been doing it for over 20 years, and they're very accurate to the modern developments. Once we, you know, establish the pre-development conditions, you know, we develop, analyze, and simulate the proposed conditions models, maintaining, you know, those pre-existing Following the state and county regulations in the post-development, the project is required, once again, to not adversely impact upstream or downstream properties. We have to demonstrate a no-rise condition, which is Spencer covered that in his presentation earlier this morning, .01 feet. You know, that's de minimis. And so these models, as Spencer talked about earlier today, are very, very tedious. This takes a lot of effort, a lot of man-hours, running these models, working with the county staff, especially a project of this size. You know, like I said, we have direct experience with this. We did the project next door, and we spent hundreds and thousands of man-hours running these models to get those projects to work. The benefits, you know, of a master-planned community and a master surface water management plan is very similar to what the previous application said. You know, all the stormwater is collected, routed to the water management facility, treated for water quality. The storm is attenuated, then it discharges to an offsite location. A project of this size has greater benefits. You know, we have more lakes, we have more opportunities to provide water quality, plus provide flood attenuation. We also have, you know, natural features that we're going to use to our benefit, i.e. the elevation drop across the property, preserving some of the wetlands, preserving the wildlife corridor. All of that is undeveloped area that, you know, basically remains at natural grade. The post-development condition also provides The post-development condition also provides controlled discharge points versus pre-development conditions, which would be just water sheet flowing, a property of this size. So in the post-development condition, you know, like I said, all the water's routed, treated, attenuated, and we have control structures that discharge the water, maintaining the pre-development discharge rates. That's a permit requirement. Another benefit to a project of this size is the operation and maintenance of this system. You know, they're generally of this size would be a CDD or a stewardship district or something with a little more teeth than just an HOA. You know, that's a quasi-judicial government that has the taxing authority and the ability and the responsibility to maintain these systems in perpetuity. And really, I can just close and just restate, the project is required to meet all the state and county stormwater rules in perpetuity for this system. And I'm sure there will be some questions.
Thank you. I want to give the applicant, where do we, we got short on time. What areas did you not address that you think would be important for the public to know?
I wanted to touch on public engagement, and then I was going to ask Mr. Vogler, our counsel, to close for us. And so, I'm, three minutes, maybe four minutes?
Okay, that's fine. Actually, you know what? If you could tie it in with the question I have alongside any other commissioners, just going back a minute on the buffers. So where did I miss it? On the Clark Road, the concept of zero buffer was only related to the commercial with the concept of being, when the community wants to use commercial, they don't want to be going deep into a subdivision that would be upfront. That was the reason for the zero on Clark Road. Fair summary or not?
Visibility, more than anything. Yeah.
Okay. And then the west was 50 to 500, and then south was because it was abutting up to existing open space?
Abutting the greenway.
Okay. All right, fair enough. And, yeah, fine, go ahead. Take three, five minutes to whatever closing you would like to come about. And then, again, I'm sure probably there'll be other questions.
I just wanted to touch, again, Katie Labarre with Stantec, representing the Neal Communities. I wanted to quickly touch on public engagement, because, as you probably know, I'm involved in a lot of large-scale development throughout the region. And I can say that the amount of public engagement that we have embarked upon for this particular project is unprecedented. We have worked very closely with the neighborhood communities. I give a lot of credit to Ivory Matthews and Katie Alderman with Neal Communities for having several one-on-one meetings with concerned residents. The slide shows several of the different communities that we did meet with. We also had two different neighborhood meetings because of timing. And so there's just been significant touchpoints throughout the project, getting to this point with surrounding neighbors and concerned citizens. With that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Ed Vogler to close.
Commissioners, my name is Ed Vogler. I have signed a speaker's card, and we appreciate the opportunity of presenting today. I don't want to stand here as an attorney advocate. I want to help us frame the questions that are on our minds. And we know that, because we all sat through your hearing today. And so a couple of things I would tell you is, Neal Communities, as an applicant here, is an expert in master plan development. And I want to underscore the testimony of the engineer, because when you have a master plan development, you have a significant number of additional opportunities that are not presented in a smaller infill development. Neal Communities also has a track record of success. I'd like to underscore Mr. Neal's testimony. Out of our 50 projects in this area, none of them have suffered the type of damage that you've heard tragically bespoke about some of the older neighborhoods particularly. And that's what I want to frame a little bit about it. 1992 seems like a very long time ago, although I was practicing. Sadly, it makes you think, doesn't it? And certainly, as a policy question Mr. Anderson indicated, it's something to evaluate. But nobody has really framed the question that I have, and maybe it's just me, but I would like to know, in the modern era, the swift mud era, 92 era, and when Sarasota County elected to adopt the higher standard, how many of the modern communities, the modern systems, how many of those have failed in these extraordinary rains that we've had? None in our communities. None in our communities. And I can only tell you anecdotally, in knowing what we would be discussing today, we've investigated this the best we can. And there are some horrific situations, but I submit to you, I'll be very brief, I submit to you that that's the question that should be asked. And I guess we'll have a short period for rebuttal, and I just wanted to point out to you, you come through a process like this with all of these consultants, and do you realize you have some of the very best staff in the whole region? I mean, we're in seven counties, and we deal with everybody, municipalities. You have experts here, true experts. And when the staff report recommends an approvable project, and when it's as significant a project as this, and with this type of review and brain power, I believe you can rest assured that the i's have been dotted and the t's have been crossed, and this is a framework for approval today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from staff? I have no one on the board. I did want to take one more. Jeremy, could you come back for just for one second? We touched on this lightly, but it resonates with me, and I don't want to be in my own bubble on this. Related to the watershed, is doing a master plan community, and Mr. Vogler just touched on it a minute ago, what opportunities does that give you versus when you're dealing with patchworked subdivisions? Just, I mean, without getting too technical in it in layman's terms, how does that help you with the watershed and for everyone concerned?
Well, it's a development of a series of facilities, lakes in this case. Most of these developments are going to be wet retention or lake systems. So it's developing a system of lakes that basically daisy-chain on themselves from high ground to low ground, and it just creates a, I guess, a redundant efficiency for attenuation of stormwater. In lieu of a infill parcel that you don't have any access to the neighbor's pond or the next-door neighbor's facility, you know, the project is 2,700 acres, and it's almost four miles from north to south. I mean, this is a large piece of property where, you know, the development itself is going to be almost like a small city, a small watershed, it's going to operate inclusive of itself. So it is different than, you know, standard just 100-acre developments or tract development. It just has a bigger benefit for that.
No, thoughtful, great, thank you. I appreciate that. Maybe we'll talk again about it in rebuttal. But with that, let's, sorry, Ms. Messina, I didn't mean to cut you off. I just want to take the opportunity.
No worries. Thank you, Chair. Again, for the record, Anna Messina, Planning and Development Services. Just do not need to go through a whole presentation. The applicant obviously has very well presented the differences in the applications for this petition that you have before you, the development, the master development plan and the rezone. Just wanted to highlight a couple of things that are particular to the project itself. The development of critical concern does include that master development plan, along with 20 recommended development order conditions that have been recommended by staff, that touch upon several items and need to be, you know, checked during the course of the development itself. I also, this is, you know, again, you know, the master land use plan that's associated with the rezone, where it's showing how the applicant intends to comply with the village plan development requirements, as listed on this slide. A particular, you know, instance for this site is that it is also part of what we know as the Clark Road properties, which in it, you know, themselves have certain incentives that were allotted for development that have to do with, you know, base density of the two dwelling units per gross acre, internal, you know, transfer of rights. It also has the qualities that the applicant can ask for a reduction in the open space from the 50 percent standard that the village plan development would normally ask, and it also can have a request for exceptions to the green belt. In this case, you know, subject to the board's authorization, you may or may not find that the project complies with the conditions that it needs to demonstrate in order to ask for this reduction. This slide notes the conditions that, again, were explained by the applicant. It shows what the 50 percent open space would be based on the site area, what the applicant is proposing, again, up to the board's, you know, decision to, you know, deem the criteria as acceptable. And also up to the board is any reduction, you know, between the 50 percent, no less than 33. So it's not, it has to go to 33, just want to clarify. It's a reduction to the 50 that can be no less than 33 percent. The project, again, is also asking for exceptions to the green belt. These are the conditions that a project would need to meet in order to ask for those requests. The project, as noted by the applicant, is asking to go from a 500-foot standard green belt buffer to 50-foot along these north, the north side perimeter, where it abuts rural heritage estate lands that share similar densities and form. It's asking to go from that 500 to a 50-foot green belt, where the property abuts Clark Road, with a provision for a zero green belt where a village center exists abutting that same Clark Road. It's asking for a zero green belt along the east side, where Lorraine Road abuts the neighboring Sky Ranch Village Plan Development, citing, you know, that it meets condition four. It is requesting the same zero green belt along the southern side, because the Greenway RMA already provides a natural buffer that is greater than the 500-foot standard. It's requesting a 50-foot green belt along the west side, where the majority of the property abuts other village plan developments, Trisera and Sky Ranch, I mean, Grand Park, and other rural heritage lands along the north side that have been already developed as well for residential purposes that are similar in density. There will be a 500-foot partial green belt on this west side, where the property abuts a cluster of OUE1-zoned properties. These properties, because they do not share in the same similar density and are not appropriate for future village plan developments, even though they are within the village open space RMA, cannot qualify for these conditions. The board should note that the project is proposing to provide the 500-foot green belt along just one of four parcels that make up this OUE1 cluster. Along with the open space reduction request and green belt exceptions, the project is also requesting 15 other modifications to our UDC standards. In general, they refer to the use of gates within neighborhoods, alternative street designs, residential setback dimensions, variances, deferring village and neighborhood center mix of uses and exact housing types to our neighborhood plan process, reduction of lotside drainage and utility easements, allowance of passive parks within the green belt, and an increase in height for multifamily-type structures. All of the justifications of the applicant are within the staff report, but are mostly meant to assist in a long-term development of a very large site, where specific details for each phase are not yet fully defined and can have the ability to adjust to market trend changes. With the rezone, there is also 24 recommended stipulations that cover several discipline items, ranging from the master land use compliance, density unit count, the mechanisms for transfer of rights, the maximums of habitat acreages that need to be met in order to ensure the open space preservation, park area requirements, specifics for the future school site, cultural resource assessments, traffic study requirements, and requirements for master utilities plans. To assist with the findings of fact included within your staff report, we have conducted a consistency analysis of the comprehensive plans, goals, objectives, and policies. Based on this, petition may be found consistent with several land use, Sarasota 2050 RMA, and housing policies that reflect land use compatibility, consistency with the planning process for a variety of housing types, incorporating open space and park areas, providing interconnected street networks, and demonstrating a fiscal neutrality. The analysis also shows that the petition may not further some of our Sarasota 2050 RMA and housing policies that refer to affordable housing, although not a UDC requirement. And up to the board's discretion, they may find also inconsistency with the requirements for a reduction in open space and green belt widths. There are two motions for this request, one for the development of critical concern master development order, and one for the rezone, fully noted on this slide to assist with your motions. Staff's available for any questions.
Great, thank you. Any questions for staff? Any questions for the applicant? If not, I'm going to move on to public comment. Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Messina. Okay, if I could ask, please, that front row, if we could maybe clear that, because we're going to stage speakers, to maybe save a little bit of time here. As I mentioned, we've got a number of request-to-speak cards here. If you could stage here, there's a clock over here for judging your time, and maybe we'll go an hour or so and maybe take a break here. It will depend on the will of the board here. But let's start with Joe, I believe it's G-U-G-I-N-O, maybe? Bruce Hiller, Jane Granboucher, Kathy Lane, followed by Jag, R-U-P-N-A-N-I-A-N, I believe. Are you Joe?
Yes, I am.
Good afternoon, sir. You're recognized for five minutes. And before you start, just real quick, with the number of cards here we have, it's completely okay if you agree with a previous speaker. Feel free to say so. Don't feel obligated to use the five minutes of time. The interest of not being redundant is helpful to all. But again, I don't want to limit anybody's time that they need or want to be heard, but feel free to just stand up and say you agreed with previous speakers, or whatever you feel necessary for us to be heard and make a policy decision here. Thank you for the pause. You're recognized, sir, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Joseph Cagino with the Office of Loebek and, losing my train of thought, the offices of Loebek and Hanson. We're here to make a presentation in front of the commission on behalf of Saddle Creek. Basically, as the previous presentations actually admitted, and has now become a fact, I believe, that the property that they're trying to develop has a flow of the water from the north to the south. And that's what we're concerned with at Saddle Creek, that the floodplain for the rain flows into the area. It's been a known flood zone. We have this thing called cowpen sleuth that has apparently never been maintained or never been adequately maintained. It appears to go back to around the time that these building standards, these flood standards were put in place, around the 90s. It's supposed to provide drainage. It's not adequate. As a side note, I think I can help the commission solve two problems. If you eliminate the flooding, you may eliminate the coyote problem. Just my opinion, that the flooding may cause the coyotes to come out and, you know, go where they don't usually go. We're working on this standard that's built on 10 inches of rain every 24 hours. We've heard all day long that there was more than 10 inches of rain in a 24-hour period. So the question that I have for the board is, how can this type of flooding be prevented from happening again? Does it require the board to take action and maybe, you know, have the staff investigate this cowpen sleuth, maybe maintain it? I think the residents and the citizens of these properties that were affected deserve better, not a standard that, we're only working to a standard to not make it worse. You know, I think we got to make it better. I would also like to suggest that everybody that I've heard all day here has talked about these minimum standards. I would like to suggest to the board that if a developer came in here and exceeded the minimum standards, that would kind of be like a stamp of approval, that you built higher than you had to, because, you know, you went over the standard. So you're exceeding the standard. And I would like to remind the board that the chair spoke about facts earlier. Well, the one fact that nobody in this room can disagree about is there's been three significant rain events, and these have all caused flooding. And we can talk about the prior, I believe it was number 59, where it was a small parcel. We can talk about this 2,500-acre parcel. But this is all the county. And it seems apparent to me that this water has to go somewhere. I mean, I think that it's a, probably a fact that's not subject to dispute, that water flows to the lowest point. You know, if I were in court, I'd be asking the judge to take judicial notice of that fact. fact. I don't know who can dispute that. I'm not a scientist, I'm not an engineer, I'm just, you know, a mayor attorney. So that's what I have to say. I would also like to remind the chair that you spoke at length about these models that were developed by the staff that everybody refers to. I'd like to know where these models are. And if we're dealing with a 1993 standard, we're in 2024. We're getting a lot more rain. If you've lived here more than a couple of years, I think you know that we're getting a lot more rain. I don't think it's going to change. So I think that the board has an obligation to some of the citizens that are here to look at this, to look at this cowpen sleuth. I'd like to tell you about a report that I was given. This report was created by the USDA National Resources Conservation Services in September of 97. And in that report, they consulted with about 10 different agencies on this cowpen sleuth, down to the county, SWIFTMUD, the Environmental Services, the Corps of Engineers, the EPA, the Florida Department of Transportation. And I think that there's a problem out there and I don't know, maybe it's something the board can't solve. Maybe you need to go to the state to solve this flooding problem. But I don't know how you can sit there and deny that there was a flooding problem, and I'm not saying that you are denying it. I think you've, you've acknowledged that and you've given extra time for everybody to talk about this flooding problem. So on behalf of Saddle Creek, I'd like the commission to consider investigating this cowpen sleuth and see what you can do to increase the drainage for all these concerned people that are here. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, Bruce Hiller, followed by Jane Grandboucher, followed by Kathy Lane.
Good afternoon, I'm Bruce Hiller, and I represent also Saddle Creek. I'm the president of the HOA. And while the previous speaker spoke to drainage and stormwater, I would have to agree with Mr. Neal in that this project is really different than the last project that you just continued, pushed it down the road a little bit, in that this project is much more invasive, much more problematic from a stormwater consideration, and I think needs, you need to take likely the same action you took on the last. Clark Road, our other concern is, is traffic. I was at a meeting of some planners within the county, probably five or six years ago. It was held at Twin Lakes Park at a meeting room there. And it was discussed how Clark Road was going to be developed from a infrastructure standpoint. And they promised that it was going to go from its current two lanes to six lanes from I-75 to Twin Lakes Park, and then four lanes from Twin Lakes Park to Lorraine. And none of that has happened. It's been five or six years. All we've had seen done was two roundabouts built, one at Proctor and one at Lorraine, neither of which can accommodate the additional lanes. So at some point, if you decide to do this development, you're going to rip out those roundabouts that you just spent a lot of money building. And I don't know how else you'd get around that, get around the roundabout, get it. The other issue is, when Sky Ranch was being developed, for the longest time, when houses were already built there, the only way they can get out of there was they came to a stop, and that stop was opposite of a stop sign at Lorraine, and they were kind of offset. So it was kind of scary for those residents, the new residents of these million-dollar homes in Sky Ranch, to make that left turn on the Clark Road. And one morning, well, I was at a meeting with a number of people who were involved in that project, the development of Sky Ranch, and I'm thinking, what are we going to do about this intersection here? Because we're concerned as Saddle Creek residents going down Clark Road, there's a lot of craziness at that intersection. And I heard from one of the developers or one of the people involved in the development of Sky Ranch, they heard from the state that someone was going to have to die at that intersection before they would take action. And I said, wow, that's, that's really kind of an odd way to look at things. And lo and behold, about two days later, there was a horrible accident at that very intersection, someone coming, someone coming out of Sky Ranch, making a left turn, can turn onto, onto Clark Road, and was hit by one of the big trucks coming out of the high hat dirt pit. And this poor woman didn't have a chance. She did survive. And it was two days after that, I sent a letter to Mr. Moran and my state senator and our attorney saying, you know, here's what I heard, someone's going to have to die at that intersection. And they almost did. And two days after that, they approved the permit for that roundabout. So that's the type of, if that's the kind of planning we're going to get around this new development, I think we need to put a pause on it because the infrastructure has to be put in place before the people start living in, in the homes. And before you start populating the neighborhoods, you have to have the proper infrastructure. I actually ran into the woman who was almost, I was being admitted to a hospital for some surgery, and as I was being processed, the woman who was taking my information asked where I lived, and I told her I live in Saddle Creek. She says, where is that? I said, well, it's out there by the National Cemetery. She says, oh, I live out that way. I live at Sky Ranch. I said, well, how do you like living at Sky Ranch? She says, well, I really like it, except one morning I was pulling out of there and I got absolutely crunched in a, in an automobile accident. It was the very woman who, who I saw, saw that happen to. And she almost lost her life. She missed six months of work, all because there was lack of concern for infrastructure on a major project like this. So I'd like you to consider doing the same thing for this project that you did for the last much smaller, less invasive project, which is putting a pause on it, basically. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Jane Grandboucher, followed by Kathy Lane, followed by Jag Narian, I believe, and followed by Jen Valeriel. Jane Grandboucher, go on once, Grandboucher. Kathy Lane. Good afternoon, ma'am. We recognize for five minutes. There's a clock right over there to judge your time.
Hi, I'm Kathy Lane. And on a, on a very light note, I'm a resident of Sarasota County, and I've been in the real estate business for over 30 years. I am in favor of the project. You know, Sarasota County is still ranked by several news as one of the top places that people want to live, and we need to have a home for them. So whatever is worked out here, I just want to say that there's a variety of houses and apartments and all of that is available within this subdivision, and people, people need a place to live. So I think that's a consideration that needs to be from a, you know, resident, that we all, we want our neighbors and we want to encourage people moving to Florida. It's good for our livelihoods. So hopefully we can work everything out and we will have a great new project and place for people to live. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Jag? Good afternoon, sir. You're recognized for five minutes, followed by Jen Valeriel, followed by Brianna Pay, P-A-Y-R-E, I believe, then followed by Mark Socchar, S-O-C-H-A-R. Welcome.
Good afternoon. So my name is Christian Jennings. I'm taking the place of Jag, who was unable to be here today. I do have a card filled out as well. Again, I'm Christian Jennings. I'm the area sales manager for Simply Dwell Homes. I want to tell you a little bit about Simply Dwell Homes. We were created in early 2023, and we created this company to build quality homes for a budget-conscious consumer who wants to take part in the dream of homeownership. We currently have two active projects that I would like to share with you. One is in Manatee County. It's Broadleaf is the name of this community. We have 266 total home sites in this community. We've sold 47 of these homes. We started the community priced out in the high 200s just this year. We are currently no longer able and possible to do those pricing due to raise, raising costs and the rise in costs that we're, we're incurring. We're currently at 310,000 to 411,000 for a 1,300 to 2,600 square foot home in this community. Our buyers that we're seeing, and I'll go over some stats in just, in just a second. Our buyers are very price sensitive, but their desire for homeownership and to get out of the rental trap is something that we are attempting to provide for them. So our focus at Simply Dwell is to provide that first-time home buyer and working class the ability and the option to achieve the American dream of homeownership. So in this community, like I said, we've had 47 homes that have sold in 2024. Of these 47, 81% have been to families or individuals under the age of 40 years old. Of these families, 76% are true first-time home buyers, with occupations varying anywhere from healthcare, education, customer service, hospitality, construction, and more. 83% or 39 out of these 47 home buyers were already living in southwest Florida, waiting and hoping for that opportunity of homeownership. The next community that I would like to speak about is in the city of Sarasota. This community is called Amarillis Park. We originally targeted to build homes for hometown heroes in the price range between $250,000 to $350,000. We were priced out of this range for a variety of reasons that I'll list now. It is in the Newtown Home District, and there are many requirements that are in this district. The cost to move power lines and guide wires, improve water and sewer services, increased side setback requirements, minimum lot square footage, municipality delays of over a year, our anticipated lot cost has more than doubled, and build costs have raised substantially. Our current pricing is at 370,000 to 430,000 as a result. Three of these seven homes are under contract and have sold. However, they are not to our original intended buyer profile due to the price. In closing, we are in support of this project and ask the board to seriously consider all the factors that directly affect affordability. We are committed to building attainable housing and have five more projects on the horizon. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. And Jag will not be speaking?
He will not.
Okay, great, thank you. Jen Valeriel, Brienne, I think it's P-A-Y-R-E, followed by Mark S-O-C-H-A-R, followed by Mark B-O-R-G-I-A-S-Z. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Jen Valeriel. And I have a signed speaker card. I've been a lifelong resident of Manatee County until earlier this month, when I moved my family to a Neal community in Sarasota County. I made this move because my home, my entire community of 61 homes, built by another local developer flooded for the second time in seven years. I moved my family to a Neal community for the quality of the homes and the safety of my family. No homes in a Neal community flooded during Hurricane Debbie. I am in support of this Neal project because I am in support of responsible development. Please vote to approve.
Thank you. Brianna Pay, P-A-Y-R-E, sorry, not pronouncing it well, followed by Mark Socchar.
Hi, it's Brianna Payne. I'm a former resident of Grand Park. I'm in favor of this project because of the roadway connection that it will provide for residents in the communities along Ibis Street to the Lorraine Road extension. Ibis is currently a dead-end street. This project provides more means of access from Ibis and as well as to access to the new school on Lorraine. I'm in full support of this project. Please vote to approve.
Thank you. Next up, Mark Socchar, followed by Mark B-O-R-G-I-A-S-Z, followed by Sherri Thornton, followed by Aaron, I believe it's May. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. I'm Mark Soccer. I've worked with Pat for over 35 years, and I picked up trash and been chief executive of the building company. And I know Pat as well as anybody outside his family, but know Pat. I'm here as a volunteer because I retired in January, and I'm not being paid to do this. So I support Pat for four reasons. First of all, his vision. He's got the ability to look at a piece of property, meld it with the environment and the habitat to excite prospects and buyers and make everybody happy in the long run, including your neighbors. Two is pass attention to detail. First day of work, day one at 7 o'clock, Pat shows up. He takes me out to walk the site, six hours of details, uplands and lowlands and wetlands and lakes and ponds and animals and birds. All this stuff is extremely important to Pat. The devil's in the details, and if you get the details right, they'll get the big things right. But, you know, he would call me at 8:30 at night, he'd be out at some site with a flashlight, worried about this. And that's Pat Neal, you know? So I think it's a personal attribute. Three is ethics. If Pat Neal tells you he will do it, he will do it. If he does something wrong that's not right, we will fix it. I've had to call Pat several times, you know, Pat, we messed up. It'll cost us about $150,000 to fix this. Now, I could try a shortcut and maybe save $50,000, and he always stops me. Pat will say, Mark, don't take any shortcuts. Do it right. Get it done. Spend the money, and please don't do it again. Yeah, so if Pat Neal tells you yes, don't honor it. You can rely and depend on Pat. Number four with Pat Neal, you get Pat Neal. It's not a project for Pat. It's not a job for Pat. It's a life. It's a dream. This is what he really wants to do. We started with four people in a worn-out trailer, and you just heard Pat talk, we're up to about 400 people right now. So Pat could kick back, be in the boats and vacation homes and planes and things like this, but that's not Pat Neal. Pat's in the same old car, driving the job sites every day, out walking the job sites every day. And his favorite thing to do in life is to take that car with his family and drive in areas that he built 10 years ago, 20 years ago, 30 years ago plus, and drive through and see the people out walking and talking, the people on bicycles, and parents out and pushing strollers with babies in them, enjoying the environment that Pat has built, the big trees, the wetlands, the birds and the animals. That's why I support Pat Neal, and I think you should vote for him. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, Mark B-O-R-G-I-A-S-Z, followed by Sherri Thornton, followed by Aaron May, I believe it is, followed by Miles, I think it's T-O-D-E-R. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. Hello, my name is Mark Borges. I'm a resident of Manatee County, with my in-laws located off Lorraine and Clark Road in Sarasota County. My family and I have been exploring Sarasota County, looking for a community to move and raise our children. 3H Ranch is a beautifully planned development, including parks, a school, nature, and different housing types. This is what we want to see as a young family in this area. I'm in favor of this project and ask for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Sherri Thornton, followed by Aaron May, followed by Miles, I believe again it's T-O-D-E-R. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Sherri Thornton, and I signed a speaker card. First, I'd like to thank Commissioner Nunder for peeling back the onion and getting to the fact that our current codes are based on 1992 data, which is scary, and Commissioner Smith for noting that the wind codes have changed substantially over the same period of time. I think those are facts that can't be disputed. One thing I want to mention here, if you look at the Wolf, this is actually the floodplain for this property up here in Saran Noah. And so you can see a good portion of this property is in, is in a floodplain designated by FEMA. The other question that was asked by the attorney is how many of the new developments that have gone through under the new codes were impacted? And he must have missed the earlier meeting, portion of the meeting where there were multiple pictures reflecting many new developments, Worthington, Laurel Lakes, Laurel Meadows, that were built to these standards that suffered greatly during the storm. So hopefully that helps answer that question. I'd like to look at 3H Ranch by the numbers. Some people in this room know that I am running for county commission, District 3, to stop overdevelopment, and this would be an example of what I would use as overdevelopment. So when you look at the numbers, as Nancy Dieter used to say, developers purchased the rights that they own. They're asking for changes. So this land is purchased, allows for 386 homes, 386. What's being asked for, what's being asked by you to change, is to go from 386 to 6,572 dwellings on the same property. That's a 1,700% increase in density. So that's part of the numbers. And how do you achieve that? Well, you've got to ask for reductions in green space. So when you look at the green space by the numbers, 50% green space would be 1,365 acres. The proposal is to go to 33, which is now 899 acres. That's 466 acres of green space that you would be giving away that could absorb rainwater and help offset flooding. So as you look at that, I would suggest that you consider that in your plan. And here's part of the code that talks about the green space. I don't know if it's showing up on there. But basically, it's that each of the conditions must be met, and that open space along east, south, and west perimeters, there will be connectivity and green space. So the applicant... So, the applicant, in their map, said that they were asking for the reduction because they have pathways for animals that they can travel, being 100 feet. I would ask, is 100 feet adequate, given the fact that the wildlife corridors are set up to be 500 feet? I don't believe that that would meet the definition to give the additional reduction in green space. Other exceptions that they're asking for are along the greenbelt and reductions in the greenbelt. And again, commission may give those reductions. Here's the policies. It's 5.1 greenbelt, and it says, "The village in Hamlet shall establish a greenbelt minimum of 500 feet." The Board of Commissioners may authorize a greenbelt reduction with certain things are met, and then it refers to VOS 3. So, the picture of VOS 3, it takes a long time to research this stuff, is right here. So, the exceptions that they are showing for that are showing properties that are 5 acre to 5 acre, and then the homes are set in the middle of those. And you have a tree green space there. The other exception is for lots greater than 2 acres and then abutting 2 acre lots. And again, the houses are in the center. And quick back-of-the-napkin math, if a square acre is 43,000 square feet, you're getting more than your 500 feet of border because of the space of the housing that's there. So, again, I find problems with what they're asking for. So, there are 16 modifications and exemptions.
Time's expired.
Okay, all that address reduction of green space.
Thank you. Next up, Aaron May, followed by Miles Toder, followed by Robert Kingan, K-I-N-G-A-N, followed by Todd Mapes. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. My name's Aaron May, and I've signed a speaker card. I've had the privilege of being a resident here for 15 years, working as a Realtor, investor, and developer in Sarasota and Manatee County. As you know, our area is one of the most sought-after in the nation, and thanks to its unique humanities, undeniable charm, and the overwhelming sense of community, this high demand underscores the urgent need for housing options for people from all walks of life. So, I strongly encourage you to approve this application, which represents a thoughtfully-designed and a masterfully-planned community that will meet our housing needs for years to come. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Miles Toder, I believe, followed by Robert Kingan.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. I've appeared before you, before, representing SERD, which is the Sarasota EastEnders, for Responsible Development. I think we've been suing each other back and forth. But today, I'm here to talk about 3H Ranch, which is on the edge of the Bee Ridge neighborhood, whose residents I represent. And I like Pat Neal, and I like master-planned communities. I used to be an urban planner. I think there's a lot of value in building to scale and doing things right, getting all the details worked out. I just think the timing of today's hearing and the next two evenings, there's neighborhood workshops, is a little bit unfortunate, given the damage done by the recent hurricane, the unclear but probable causes, and legitimate but overdue questions about future development, its impact, and ways to mitigate it. Maybe it's time to return back to concurrence, where we build the infrastructure to meet the needs, rather than just sort of hope that after we build it, the public sector will follow along with roads and sewers and stormwater management. What is inexplicable is the lack of commitment that I've seen so far today to an independent investigation, despite the fact that some of our, that some public comments from state, and I think even some of our local officials, have used the word "independent investigation." Okay? It's one thing to hire an engineering firm, to bring in expert talent to help us, our county staff and our commissioners. It's another thing to have a parallel, independent, professional, and sort of dispassionate look at what happened, what caused it, and what we need to do differently. So, I would urge us to consider that. It can be expensive, it can be time-consuming, but I think we're worth it. In terms of the impact, look, there's been a valiant attempt to proceed here with business as usual after a tragedy like this, insofar as county growth and development. But that business-as-usual attempt, I am afraid is undermining citizen confidence in our elected leaders and in our professional staff. I think we, you know, we just had a primary election. I think the turnout rate was something around 17%, which is not great, but average in the United States and in Florida. But we have a general election coming up in November, and my hope is that a tragedy like this is going to get people paying attention, thinking about what's right and what's wrong with Sarasota, and I think there's an awful lot right here, and coming out to vote in November. And that's, to me, is very important. I think it was Winston Churchill who said, "The people get the government they deserve." And I think that's very, very true, and I hope that more people are encouraged to vote come November. Let me just talk to the merits of the 3H petition that Mr. Neal has proposed. Many of us testified to your planning commission about concerns concerning traffic, stormwater management, the number of exceptions that the applicant is looking for, and even questions raised by professional staff in terms of density, buffers, wildlife, and biodiversity. It's not good enough for the county commission to approve developments in principle and leave the details of site development in the future and hope for the best, that planning services, building and code enforcement, and other county departments will ensure code enforcement with little or no public scrutiny or visibility. So, this is your chance, as a legislative body, to weigh in on the details of this proposal, to put in the stipulations, and to set the tone for how this development is going to play out. I don't think that should be delegated to bureaucrats in the county. We've seen that movie before, and it doesn't turn out well. In terms of what's next, I think it's problematic that county services are busy cleaning up our current mess and unable to look forward to avoid other man-made catastrophes, and make no mistake, this was done by us. Instead, we should be revisiting our county standards and codes. I think that's been discussed today. Updating for more densely settled, vulnerable areas as the planet warms, and ensure that we are anticipating the risks and managing it appropriately in the future.
Thank you. Next up, Robert Kingan, followed by Todd Mapes, followed by Alexis Cole, followed by Thomas Fasiggi. Sorry, I couldn't get it right earlier either. Sorry. Sutton, Robert?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commission. I'm a homeowner in Saran Noah, so I want to establish that. A lot of these speakers, prior to this, not just on this subject particularly, have referred to density as being the problem. And in this case, as one of our just recent previous speakers pointed out, going from 386 homes to 6,572 is absolutely out of sight. I mean, you just cannot conceive of how big this project is. In fact, if this project was built to the, each household's size was the same as average in Sarasota, when this project is built out, the number of people living in this project would exceed the current populations of three counties, three separate counties in Florida, just to give you an idea of size. Now, one of the previous speakers also spoke about the reduction of open space. Now, this is really important. Even the current landowner brought this up. Very important to keep open space. This project seeks to reduce the open space from 50% to 33%. Why? There's really no reason to do it. There's absolutely no hardship involved here. If you're going to do a modification, especially when something says "shall," "shall be this amount," why would you do it? For what reason? Is there a good public reason for this? I don't think so. I think it's a very good private reason for this. It's called profit, but you don't need to do, you don't need to approve that reduction. Similar thing for greenbelt. I could see abutting commercial property that it's not nearly as important, but it sure is important for residential to keep that greenbelt at 500 feet. Several other points of modifications that were requested to the UDC, the Uniform Development Code, by the developer include reduction of lotline easements, reduction of utility and drainage easements. Why? Why would you do that? I can see from his point of view, it makes sense. Why does it make sense for me, as a resident in the area? Why does it make sense for you to approve that? The height requirement maximum is 45 feet. They want to take that to six stories. Not all over the site, obviously, but just in certain, they want to breach that height limit. Now, that is really incomprehensible to me. Why would you need to do that? You've got 6, 6,572 homes you're building here. You do not need to increase the height. So, you need to look at density, you need to increase green space, you need to look at those easements, modifications that are being requested, and you need to also reduce the, or not approve, I should say, the increase in height for parts of this development. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, Todd Mapes, followed by Alexis Cole, followed by Thomas Fasiggi, I believe, and Todd Mapes, going once, going twice. Alexis Cole? Good afternoon, you're recognized for five minutes.
Good afternoon. All right. I realize this is a rezoning issue. Can you guys hear me okay? I realize this is a rezoning issue. However, I'm here today as a third-generation Sarasota native to open the discussion to a holistic approach to the 3H Ranch rezoning and subsequently the general land development that's happening in Sarasota, Florida. I am Dr. Alexis Cole, a local emergency veterinarian who was raised on 10 acres out east back when it was out east. It's kind of changing now. I had the luxury of growing up in the, in nature with animals and learning off the land, something that I think many kids are missing out on today, where they can only see it through a screen. This hands-on, self-directed way of life taught me similar to that of a Montessori school, which I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with, but many very successful people have come from that, like Amazon, Google, Facebook creators, people like Bill Gates have learned from Montessori schools. These schools really emphasize hands-on learning and using the children's natural innate drive for what they want to learn. And now, these people probably didn't grow up in rural Florida, but they did go to a school that taught them critical thinking and learning off the land and how to appreciate that, that self-integrating way to think. This is just a testament to the importance of the love of learning and critical thinking and how that reflects on our children. I don't have any kids, but I'm sure many of you do, and that this does have an impact on them. The high-density housing really takes this away from people. It takes us away from our children who are growing up in our communities. This is something that rural communities can provide. David Attenborough, who is one of the narrators for many nature documentaries, says, "If children do not grow up learning about nature and appreciating it, they will not understand it. And if they don't understand it, they will not protect it. And if they don't protect it, then who will?" So, I'm here today with a message from God that has been laid on my heart to emphasize the importance of children growing up on rural land. Increasing this density is really going to reflect on our communities that are growing up in this area. And again, I emphasize that this is a very unique area, that we have the privilege of having the countryside, Maica State Park, and then having our beautiful beaches, things that everyone attains. They want to come here, they want to be a part of this because it is so great. And if we take that away from our next generation, we're going to be left with nothing because land cannot be replaced. As a doctor, it is easy for me to see how one system directly affects another. And as you listen to reasons to consider postponing or reevaluating this cataclysmic rezone, I want you to be conscientious and just imagine the bigger picture. I want you guys to ask yourselves, does this development have a favorable or unfavorable impact on the environment and the natural resources? I know you've listened over and over and over again about the stormwater drainage and all that. I was appointed by the state of Florida for Hurricane Anne to be the veterinarian for the USAR, the Urban Search and Rescue Canines, while they were going out there. I can tell you that it is not the wind that is the most damaging. It is, in fact, the water, and so that is why this is such a high priority, a high standard, and being able to meter that. You're right, I've actually done a lot of research. I don't know who said it, but someone said that it does take a lot of research, and it really does. I'm a veterinarian. I always say I can read really fast. I try to keep up with you, what you guys have to know in order to do your jobs, and I can tell you, a 20-minute presentation is not going to cover that. I really, really want to urge on your hearts and beg to you to please take some extra consideration when moving forward on this, because it's not just your generation. You guys may come and go and move on to other positions, but there are others of us who want to stay in this community and want to continue growing and thriving and flourishing as a total community. One big thing that I want to touch on before I run out of time is that Mr. Neal said that this does not fall in a basin. I don't know if it really truly does or not. That's not mine to decide, but I can say that it does empty into Little Sarasota Bay, and it does empty into Donna Bay, per their application. And there has been a major event that happened in Donna Bay that you guys have spent millions of dollars, lots of planning, took years and years to recover because of the freshwater output. Basically, the canals were created in the 60s, the Calpan Slough Basin, those canals were created, creating a large flow of freshwater output that went through to decrease the salinity, changes in the pH, not to mention the nitrogen, not to mention all the heavy metals that flow off. I know I'm about to run out of time, but Donna Bay underwent a major restoration project, and I just want you guys to consider saving that from having to happen again.
Thank you. Next up, Thomas Fasiggi. Sorry, sir, I did it again. Followed by Jane Armstrong, followed by John Hales, followed by, I believe it's Martin Armstrong, followed by Harrison Green. Then we'll take a short break, and after that, we probably got another little over two hours of cards. So, somebody left their glasses up here. Go ahead, sir, you're recognized.
Okay, good afternoon again. You know, this really isn't about Pat Neal. He's a great guy. He's well-liked in the community. What this is really about is it's about science, and the science is hydrology. It's the movement of water in this community. You know, we talk about, and Commissioners, you've raised the issue of this 100-year storm, you know, 100-year, 1% a year. Well, if you can't pass the five years of the last few years, we've had more than 100-year storm. Go back to 1992, June we had a storm. 1997, 2002, 2016, we had Erby. We had Ian, 2022, and now Debbie. So, if you have six storms over a 30-year period, it's no longer a 100-year storm. It's no longer a 1% storm. It's about an 18% chance for flooding, and that's what you're really faced with today. Some of the other people have discussed the height issue, that we're looking at moving from 35 feet to 85 feet. I don't know if you realize it, that means there's multifamily involved in this. So, that's a consideration before the runoff situation. I also want to remind you that we had a pretty serious event at Bee Ridge Road, at your sanitation processing facility, spilled over a million gallons of water. And whether you agree it was treated or not, it was spilled. If you take 6,500 homes, an average of 200 homes, an average of 200 gallons a day, that's a million three in additional gallonage going out to Bee Ridge Road through your force main that you're constructing. Is the system adequate for that? We really don't know. That's why I think you need to take a pause, look at this, look at this 100- Look at this 100-year issue. Look at this 10, 10 inches of rain over a 24-hour period because you have six storms since 1992 that demonstrate they will dump additional storm water beyond that. And, you know, I'm not a great fan of the Herald Tribune, but I will tell you, one of their headlines really hit home with me the other day. I don't know if you can see this.
A wolf, please.
Okay. There it is. Climate shift lightly intensifies storms. The experts are telling us climate shift change. The experts are telling us increased levels of seawater. The experts are telling us it's time to put the brakes on and reevaluate whether 10 inches in 24 hours is an adequate number. I don't think it is, and I hope you feel the same way. And put the brakes on this for the time being. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Jane Armstrong, followed by John Hales, followed by, I believe, Martin Armstrong, followed by Harrison Green, and then again, we'll take a break.
Can I make one more point? I have two minutes left. FEMA is.
Go ahead, sir.
FEMA is reviewing their flood standards, and they put a notice in the Congressional Record in March to review the flood standards. And one of the items that is number one on this is incentivize communities to make measurable actions and make sustained progress that reduces current and future flood risk. And that's all we're talking about, is reducing future flood risk. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I was born in the state. I grew up in Manatee County, and I moved to Sarasota County in the early 80s. And I've lived in Venice ever since then. I, I have been watching. I have been paying attention. I was on an advisory board to this Commission for Parks and Recreation and Natural Resources during that, that wonderful year of 1992 that's come up so often. And I don't know how many people really understand that the celery fields that everybody views as this great birding place, which it is, it's a gorgeous resource, was created after that, that storm event because Colonial Gables and Colonial Oaks, which was a more recent development, and we had a new park coming out of that at that time. It was completely flooded. It was flooded to the point that people I worked with at Sarasota Memorial had to be boated back and forth so they could go to work for a week after that event. It was shocking. People said, you know, WTF? What, how did we get here? What can we do? At that point, the celery fields was where the celery used to be grown. And people started looking at it as, can we, can we do a mitigation with that? And it took, it took a while. One of the things that they found out when they started looking at the soil that this, because it was agricultural, there was a lot of stuff in the soil, pesticides, that, that had to be dealt with. But it was a project that everybody got behind because it was a solution. And, and look what came of it. Once we take an area that's so many acres and strip it down to the subsoil where there is not a single living thing on it, you will not restore that. It's gone. Everything from the microorganisms to the, to the big species, plants, the whole thing's gone. And you can bring in 15 different species of whatever to landscape, and it will look pretty. And it will, it will meet the needs of some people who have grown up in other parts of the country, and they have a Disney fever dream about Florida because they've been here and had such a wonderful time on vacations. But we are taking advantage of that and bringing people in. And I'm, I'm hearing people say, well, we have an obligation to provide homes for them. We have an obligation to take care of the people that are here right now. And a development that comes in and creates flooding for people who are already invested in the county and in their homes, it's just craziness. In Native American culture, there is a concept of reciprocity. And reciprocity basically means that whatever you take, you ask permission. And if you don't get it, then you figure out another way to go. And if you do get it, then you give more than what you took so that there's always enough for everybody. It's an intergenerational agreement that we either make or we don't make. And the whole deal of seven generations out what's here, that's on us. And we can, Pat Neal's a great guy. I was, I was out in the hall listening to people that worked for him. They had nothing but great things to say. He's got, he's in a position to do something really great right here. And that's to soften what he's trying to do and listen to the rest of the community. Because we're all his customers, whether we're buying a house from him or not. I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next up, John Hales, followed by Martin Armstrong, followed by Harrison Green. Mr. John Hales? Okay. Move on. Martin Armstrong? Good afternoon, sir. You're recognized for five minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Martin Armstrong. I'm here on behalf of Mike Armstrong Landscaping. We are third-generation nurserymen in this area. Pat Neal does a great job of designing his, his facilities in such a way that it provides plenty of green space. He goes above and beyond standards. He doesn't meet the minimum on tree requirements. He actually asks us to go up and bigger. So we have about 30 employees, and we rely on work just like this. Without people like Pat, a lot of our, our people would not have food at home and things like that. So I appreciate Pat and all he does, and I appreciate the communities that he builds, and he builds them very well. And thank you for your time. I'm for this project, and I hope you guys vote to approve it.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Harrison Green.
Hello. My name's Harrison Green. I'm the owner of Irrigation Design. And our company has worked with Pat and his team for over 20 years. So we can attest to the quality and the focus on sustainability and kind of a long-term of look forward that Pat and his team have in every project that they embark upon. And it's for this reason that I politely request that you vote to approve, approve this. All righty. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, let's take a 50-minute break. We'll come back at 5 o'clock.
All right, everybody. All right, everyone, if we could please settle in, please. We could settle in, please, and we'll get going here again for just budgeting of time for everyone. Ms. Thornton? If, um, for budgeting for time for everyone, it's a little over two hours of cards left here. Again, I'll remind everybody, if you just want to agree with previous speakers, that is completely fine as well. So with that, I'll, again, if we can keep that front row clear, and I'll, uh, read off a few names here, and please feel free to stage here to save a little bit of time. Martin Mogford, followed by Kristi Ray, followed by Sylvia, I believe it's M.A.C.C.O., and followed by Greg K.U.Y.P.E.R.S. Martin F- M.O.G.F.O.R.D.?
Martin Mogford.
Oh, yes, you're recognized.
So I'm Dan Williams, I have card as well. I'm general manager. Martin Mogford is the owner of our big, of our business, and he had to step out.
Okay, great. That's, is he, is he coming back?
He is not. So can I speak in his place? You already have my card up.
Sure, what's your last name again?
Uh, Dan Williams.
Dan Williams?
Yes.
Okay, I'll find your card. Go ahead, sir.
Okay. I'm Dan Williams with Heritage Glass, local company, privately owned, fourth generation. We've been working with Mr. Neal and, and company since nineteen ninety-two. The company has grown with Neal Communities, uh, sorry, we've grown with Neal Communities, worked through a lot of developments with him, and continuing to grow with him a- as well. Just ask you guys to seriously consider this development. My sixty-eight families that work for our facility live and, and, you know, were in this community together. And as we grow together, you know, obviously, change is inevitable. As we continue to grow, this is just, again, part of our, our world that we live in. So again, gentlemen, I appreciate your time, and again, we just would like you to approve what we're doing here.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Kristi Ray, followed by Sylvia, again, I think it's M.A.C.C.O., followed by Greg K.U.Y.P.E.R.S., followed by Brian Sexton.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Yes, my name is Kristi Ray, and I am one of the owners of Daystar Exterior Cleaning, a local business here. And, um, we have been working with Neal Communities now for over twenty-five years, and I can definitely attest, as a pressure washing company, to Mr. Neal's attention to detail. As you know, that many houses, that many developments, there comes spills, there comes a mess, here comes Daystar. And he has provided a lot of work for our company, and, um, his team is, we get those calls, we get those calls, we've got an issue, we, can you be here tomorrow? And he has been good to us, we are faithful to him, and, um, we want you to approve this, this measure for him. Thank you.
Thank you. Sylvia? I guess it's good evening now.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, so my name is Sylvia Maco. I live in Revo Lakes, which borders the Three H Ranch Development Site. We're on the northern border of their site. While I recognize the need for growth and development, I'm alarmed by several aspects of the project and the potential impact it will have on our community and the environment. Unfortunately, multiple meetings and discussions with Neal developers has been unsuccessful. There are a lot of inconsistencies with each meeting. Our community has expressed our main concerns, one being lack of an environmental buffer. We live in a conservation community. Revo Lakes was built as a conservation community. We have a hundred-foot buffer. We're just asking them for the same, and to keep it, uh, keep the border with proper landscaping that our development would need as protection from the dirt and debris from the other, um, from the new neighborhood being built. Additionally, the potential for flooding during storms, which you've heard all day today, and I've been here too, during storms is a grave concern. Our community experienced the effects of Hurricane Debbie a few weeks ago. We had flooding in the front of our house and the back of our house, and we're a new neighborhood. All the drains backed up, we had fish swimming in the streets, so there is a big concern with the flooding. Both sides of our community, with the most severe being on the side that borders Three H Ranch. This is a clear indication, there should be an environmental study done on the impact this development will have on Revo and surrounding areas. We are also troubled by the height of proposed structures. We keep getting told different things are going behind us. Originally, it was the signature homes, and that's no longer happening, so we don't know what's going immediately on our buffer. The towering structures will not only disrupt the aesthetic harmony of the area, but also infringe upon views and natural light that our residents currently enjoy. Furthermore, the construction traffic that will accompany this project is a major concern. The increased volume of heavy vehicles will not only disrupt our daily lives, but could also cause damage to our roads. Ibis is a two-lane road. I used to ride my bike on Ibis when I first moved into Revo. You can't do that, because the construction vehicles fly down the road to Grand Park. And yes, Neil, Mr. Neal did put a sheriff there for time to time, but he's not there every day, and this is a common occurrence. We have children in our neighborhood who wait for the bus right at the front of Revo, and these construction vehicles take up most of the road. So what I'm asking you is to reassess, um, please consider community concerns, please reassess standards before giving any approval today, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, Greg K.U.Y.P.E.R.S., followed by Brian Sexton, followed by Greg Marsh, followed by Jessica Spence. Good evening, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Greg Kuypers. I own Greg Kuypers Aluminum, and I've been doing Neal's work for about twenty-nine years. And, uh, I just wanna, I wanna go back to two thousand eight, two thousand nine, that area when the, had the housing crunch. And he took a chance, he had most, a lot of the subs bought us lunch and everything, and said he was taking a chance to go ahead and open up a subdivision. So he did. I was working two jobs, trying to sell cars, but nobody was buying cars back then, and also trying to run the business from twenty people down to three. So when he started that back up, then things started rolling again for my business. Now I have seventeen employees, and it's, it'd be nice if we could, uh, just keep them and their families. Pat has whatever many employees, but you take all the subs and that, he's, he's got thousands of people actually working for him. But anyways, uh, I'm supportive of the project, and, uh, uh, I hope you vote in favor of the application.
Thank you, sir. Brian Sexton, followed by Greg Marsh, followed by Jessica Spence, followed by Larry Hayden. Good evening, sir.
Yes, my name is Brian Sexton, I am the COO of D&amp;D Garage Doors. We have done business with Neal for approximately thirty years when we opened. We are family-owned business in Sarasota, started in Sarasota, and I'm here and speaking on behalf of the seventy-five people that we employ in Sarasota and their families, because they implored me to come, uh, because obviously, this is an economic windfall for them going forward for years, uh, in, in the fact that we will be doing these businesses. But as I listen to some of the other things that are said here, uh, I think it's very interesting also that even the people that are somewhat opposed to this plan, uh, still speak highly of Pat Neal. So I guess in my world, if you're gonna have somebody do this type of development, why wouldn't you want somebody like a Pat Neal to do this type of development? Uh, and I also wanted to say, I do live in a master plan community that's actually borders right next to this one. And yes, Debbie was horrific, I agree, but we live in a very large master plan community. And in that master plan community, the retention ponds, everything else, did their job, because it is a master plan community. It did exactly to what it's supposed to do. And, uh, you know, one third thing I said, and this may, may be unpopular, but I mean, it's, I, I guess, it, it's a cattle ranch, right? I mean, we're, we're talking about taking the cattle ranch and putting houses, and nothing against it, believe me, I love beef, I'm all for you. But the, uh, we're not, there, he's not planning on plowing down waterfalls and a natural park. I mean, it is a used property at this point that's used for agriculture use in the cattle ranch that he's gonna put houses on. So I, I think that, that weighs on this project in the fact that he's not tearing down Yosemite to build this. I mean, it is a cattle ranch. So, but we are actually strongly in favor of this, obviously, because of, and we support Pat Neal, so we hope you vote in approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Marsh, followed by Jessica Spence, followed by Larry Hayden, followed by Lee Paulson, I think it is, P.A.U.L.S.O.N., I believe.
Good, gotta change my greeting from morning to afternoon, evening. Good evening. My name is Greg Marsh, I serve as the Vice President of Forsberg Construction, a heavy civil contractor based in Punta Gorda. Our firm has been one of the most reputable contractors in southwest Florida since nineteen eighty-two, and I've had the privilege of being part of the team for over thirty-two years. For more than seventeen years, I've collaborated, collaborated closely with Neal Communities, and I can confidently say that Pat Neal and his team consistently prioritize being good neighbors and fostering strong community relations. This commitment is a core value that Pat personally emphasizes at the start of each new project. Currently, we are constructing Boca Rial East, an extension of the Neal Community Boca Rial Golf and Country Club. Throughout this project, as with all previous ones, we've worked closely with the Neal Community Affairs Team, who maintain continuous communication with residents and neighbors to address any questions or concerns. In my experience, no other developer we've worked with makes as much effort to accommodate their residents, as well as their neighbors, as Neal Communities. The Neal name is deeply personal to Pat Neal, and the quality of his work benefits both the residents and the workforce of Sarasota County. I strongly support this project and respectfully request your approval of Three H Ranch. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica Spence, followed by Larry Hayden, followed by Lee Paulson, followed by Wayne Nottingham.
Good afternoon. My name is Jessica Magrino Spence, and I am representing Ecologic Services. They are a local company that specializes in enhancing and restoring the ecological functions and values of native habitats. Ecologic has been working with Neal Communities for over six years on managing and maintaining the lakes and natural areas within their communities. The pro, or the, this project proposes to fund the conversion of cattle degraded wetlands into higher-functioning native habitats that will be maintained in perpetuity per Sarasota County requirements. Approval of this project will provide the opportunity for undesirable vegetation management within the native habitat areas, as well as the successful completion of all required restoration, mitigation, and enhancement activities, and implementation of a monitoring program to ensure compliance standards with Sarasota County environmental regulations to make sure that they are upheld. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Larry Hayden, followed by Lee Paulson, followed by Wayne Nottingham, followed by Bob, I believe it's I.L.L.I.F. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Larry Hayden, and I am the Vice President for Commercial Residential Aluminum, and I'm a Florida native. For thirty-two years, Commercial Residential Aluminum has been providing southwest Florida with premier aluminum products such as soffit, fascia, seamless gutters, and screen enclosures. Founded by our current CEO, Tom Tefenhart, this company was built on the back of his pickup truck. The story of Commercial Residential Aluminum is truly a story of opportunity that this great country and state provides. For over a decade now, Neal Communities has played an integral part of CRA's growth. Our company, that was once a one-man show, has proudly grown with three locations and over two hundred local tax-paying employees. Its partnerships like Neal Communities that have allowed this company to grow, not only in Sarasota, Manatee County, but also in other counties such as Charlotte, Lee, and Collier. We have weathered many obstacles, weathered many storms and even pandemics, but we have marched together to make sure residents successfully get placed in their new homes. I have had, uh, I have had a chance to personally meet the customers before, during, and after the construction of their new homes. The message has been consistent. They wanted to build their dream home with a contractor that cared about the product they were constructing while offering superior customer service. It's this high level of customer service that allows our two companies to work so well together. CRA is proud of its longstanding relationships with Neal Communities and looks forward to future endeavors. The approval of this project will provide more job opportunities and give hard-working, local, tax-paying employees a chance to buy their first home. You guys remember your first home, right? It's the American dream, and one that is becoming very, very hard to obtain. Thank you very much. God bless.
Thank you. Lee Paulson, followed by Wayne Nottingham, followed by Bob, again, I think it's I.L.L.I.F., followed by Vernon Bontrager, I believe. Good evening, sir.
Hi, my name is Lee Paulson, I'm representing Minnesota Flooring. Minnesota Flooring is a family-owned business, serving Sarasota County now for fifty-one years. We have been trade partners, one of the longest-standing trade partners with Pat Neal at thirty-eight years. We have built our business, side by side with Pat, with the same philosophy, the family comes first, and community, and giving back to the community is a major part. It's from those standards that I, I believe that we are here today, okay, as a business, and Pat is here today. Our company can only go forward if we have people like Pat that we can depend on to build. So I, and, and major support of Pat and this development so that I can keep my hundred-and-sixty employees busy for the next fifty years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Wayne Nottingham, followed by Bob, again, I.L.L.I.F., I believe, followed by Vernon Bontrager, followed by Michelle H.O.E.L.L.E. Wayne Nottingham, going once, going twice. Uh, Bob? My apologies on the last name, I can't.
Wasn't even close. Uh, my name is Bob Iliff. I am with Iliff, Scottish. I'm with Driggers Engineering. We're a local firm. We do materials testing and geotechnical engineering. We've done this for Mr. Neal for twenty-some years, love working for the man. He is eighty percent of my business, really is. He, he contributes a lot to my business. I do wanna say that he is quality above quantity, always has been, always is. Everything he does is quality. I am employed to make sure that he delivers quality, and that I take very seriously. It's my business, but it's also his business. He wants to do the right thing. I've spent weekends with him, having meetings with I've spent weekends with him, having meetings with homeowners associations to discuss things that they felt might be problems. He's very hands-on, his entire company is hands-on. And I do believe that he's a very good man and a very good company, and I hope that you can approve what he's requesting today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Vernon Bontrager, followed by Michael H-O-E-L-L-E, followed by Ken Natoli, followed by Rayanne Malone, or Maloney, sorry. Vernon Bontrager, going once, going twice. Michael H-O-E-L-L-E. Good evening, sir.
How are you? I'm Michael Holly, I'm the COO of Arctic Air Home Services out of Sarasota, Florida. We started with Mr. Neil about 20 years ago with 12 employees. Over the years of working with Mr. Neil, we're now up to 180 employees. Of those 180 employees, they're all tax-paying employees, they all work in Sarasota and Manatee County. We work very closely with Mr. Neil on a daily basis. He is very much about customer service. If Mr. Neil runs across a customer that he is unhappy with, he calls me or the owner directly. I've never worked with a builder in Manatee, Sarasota County, that works directly with homeowners, that takes the pride in the homeowners, who instills the practices in his business that Mr. Neil does. Just listen to his track record of no flooding in any of his subdivisions. The number-one successful business is making sure you have policies and procedures, and obviously, Mr. Neil puts his policies and procedures in every development that he has, otherwise he wouldn't have the proven track record that he has. As the gentleman once says, no offense, we are talking about a cow pasture that's gonna have no different surface with homes on it or without on it, and the gentleman has still taken the time to ensure that the floodplain is taken care of, the height of the floodplain, the direction of the water, where the water will go to at that point. If all builders took those precautions, we wouldn't be talking about other subdivisions that are flooding, as Mr. Neil is not. I approve this, and I hope that I get to be supported by Mr. Neil, and I support him for many more years. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Ken Natoli, followed by Rayanne Malone, I believe, and Susan Shutley, followed by Mary Mann. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name's Ken Natoli, and I don't know Pat Neil. Sorry, everybody else does, but I don't know, I know of them. Anyway, I live in the Isles in Palmer Ranch, that's the south part of Palmer Ranch. I'm also a licensed landscape architect, a certified planner, and I'm usually the, on that side of the fence, the applicants, but today, I'm here for a different reason. I'm here for the residents of my area, the ones that were about as close to having their houses flooded, because South Creek backed up. And they don't understand why their lakes or their roads don't go down, because they outfall to South Creek, and if South Creek is up, they're gonna, they're gonna flood. It was really close this time. So I think, you know, Hurricane Debbie was a wake-up call, hopefully a wake-up call for everybody, it sounds like it, y'all are on the board, that the 100-year storm is just not enough, unfortunately, anymore. So, you know, again, time to reevaluate, and it's important, this is a lot of acres. And so I got two things to talk about today, and one is related to 3H Ranch specifically, and also the parcel below Grand Park and the north end of Palmer Ranch East projects, because they all drain into South Creek. And South Creek comes across I-75 and goes through the south part of Palmer Ranch. And if you don't realize it, I emailed Anna the pictures, you may have seen them, the backup from South Creek, and how close some of these houses were to being flooded. You put a whole bunch of development, and you keep the same standards, you're gonna get flooding. And when you get flooding, you know what? Fooled you once, shame on you, fooled you twice, shame on me, you know, then there's gonna be some repercussions. And so hopefully, the county and developer will, will work together and come up with, you know, maybe some more lakes, maybe some more open space that will hold some of the water, or at least meet some better criteria, or any creative idea that's gonna hold back some of the stormwater, because South Creek is really, you know, it's critical. I know they said that it doesn't drain anywhere, well, that's maybe before there were houses there, and now there's houses. Now, the second thing that I wanna talk about is, is related to this, but it's about South Creek, and this is for your county engineer and whatnot. The Wednesday morning of the, after the storm, I went out on my bicycle and went all the way to 41, and to find the backup. The backup is on Bay Street, and I guess there's been some history that Oskasheera does not want more water in their park, but that's a problem. That's where, Bay Street, Oskasheera's on the, on the south side, Bay Street on the north is where Palmer Ranch starts. The water was way, you know, just, no place to go, that was the backup. But in Oskasheera, at the Legacy Trail Bridge, several feet of clearance above the bridge, so there's not a backup, there was not a backup there. Further on, their boat dock, they had, it was all out of water. Down at 41, where it actually enters into the bay, a lot of feet clearance underneath the bridge, so it's not, is not, it's not there. The backup is the north end of Oskasheera and Bay Street. Unfortunately, it's also in Espinade, because they built their road in there, and the water was way up there, so, and then at Honore Avenue, on both sides, and Honore Avenue backed up, and you know that Honore Avenue was closed down because the water was on it. So, again, we've got a situation, it really need, you know, it's serious, and now, a lot of people flooded. These people didn't, and I'm like 250 feet away from the creek, so it's not about me, it's really about a lot of other people. And so, you have the opportunity, you and your engineering department, and, you know, maybe their, their creative consultants come up with some issues for them and those other projects, so that, you know, you can stop this and avoid it, and not have a lot of people flooded with all the damages that we had here, and, you know, so, anyway, that's what I got.
Thank you, sir. Rayanne Malone, I believe, Susan Shutley, followed by Mary Mann, followed by Lee, boy, I think it's E-D-S-E-R-L-E-Y, maybe?
Hi, I'm Rayanne Malone. I'm gonna read my notes, so I stay on task. So I've lived in Southgate for 20 years, just for reference, Southgate is at Ciesto Drive and east of Trail. I'd like to start by saying I'm not anti-development. In fact, I spoke in front of the City Commission recently in support of Henderson's redevelopment of the Southgate Mall, which is pretty much in my backyard. I am, however, strongly opposed to this massive development, which is not in my backyard, but as Debbie showed us, housing developments can affect neighborhoods far and wide. Our stormwater system just experienced a major failure and catastrophic flooding along Felipe Creek, from I-75 west to Southgate. I believe overdevelopment is part of the problem, you can't pave over open space and not pay a price. Retention ponds are no longer a solution, we need a new and better plan. We need to take care of our watershed, so it's not overwhelmed like Felipe Creek was during Debbie. I think deferred maintenance and neglect of Felipe Creek was partly to blame for the flooding. For example, in 2019, there was a study conducted for Sarasota County sediment management called Felipe Creek Burial Removal Feasibility Study. This 2019 study focused on the dam in the creek at Southgate, so between Weber and Tuttle. This dam was originally built as a salinity gate for agriculture. The study looked at the feasibility of removing the six standalone stoplogs that remain from the old dam. These stoplogs interfere with the flow of the water by collecting debris and causing sediment buildup, both upstream and downstream, which would be by pine craft. The study recommended three options for removal, yet no action was taken by Sarasota County. But finally, in 2024, five years after the study, the stormwater department applied for a FEMA grant to fund the project. It's been approved by the state, but can take many months for FEMA approval. Many more months to complete the project after approval, and probably, we're probably looking at late 2025 or 2026. And what if FEMA doesn't? What if we wait all that time and FEMA doesn't approve the project? Then Sarasota County will start the process over, and that will take more, many more months. Maybe we'll be into 2027 by that time. So I would like to please ask you to pause development approvals and conduct an independent study on stormwater impacts and hydrology, and please make Felipe Creek a priority. Don't wait for FEMA to fund a project that Sarasota County should have taken care of five years ago. And don't put citizens at risk for another flood along Felipe Creek or elsewhere. It's not business as usual. Debbie was a warning. Sarasota County residents deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Shutley, followed by Mary Mann, followed by Lee, again, I think it's E-D-S-E-R-L-E-Y, I believe, and then Beth Erwin. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. Susan Shutley, and I have signed the speaker's card. I'm here, as many other people are, to ask you to pause before you approve any more developments, including this one. I don't have that many arguments against this development on the whole, I think this is not the time for it to be approved. I do agree with staff, and as close as they can say it, they have said to you, don't reduce the buffers, don't reduce the green belt, don't reduce the open space. I strongly support not making those changes to your existing regulations. Ms. Labarre, at the Planning Commission hearing, gave a novel explanation for why the buffer between their development and OUE1 properties should be reduced. They had enough buffer on their own property that that should count as the buffer. As somebody who lives on 10 acres, I found that very offensive. I understand why they made the argument, but I noticed they weren't making that argument tonight. So I think the buffers, and green belt, and open space requirements that were part of 2050 deal, the compromise that you get more intense development, there are other things being done in the public interest, I think you need to stand by those. Residents are stakeholders in all this, as much as the developer, and as one person said it very succinctly today, you need to take care of the people that are here, take care of the residents that are here now, and many of those have just experienced some really significant damage to their homes, their hopes, and their lives. So the public health, safety, and welfare is paramount on this. I'm also very concerned that if this is approved tonight, the language in the DOCC ordinance does not provide the county with enough protection to impose whatever changes in the stormwater management regulations you end up adopting and implementing. We don't, we have a lot of questions that we don't have answers to right now, but I'm pretty sure most people would agree that there are gonna be some changes to those regulations. And Debbie put a very bright spotlight on issues and events that happened, but we don't yet know why. Until we know why, we can't fix it, we can't address it. So if you look at Section 2.8 in the DOCC ordinance, which is Ordinance 2024-030, says the subject property shall not be subject to downzoning, unit density reduction, or intensity reduction from the effective date of this ordinance until December 31, 2044. It's 20 years of development that you might not be able to impose your new restrictions on, unless, and it does say, in subsection C, the county can clearly establish that a change is essential to the public health, safety, or welfare, which I think this would incur. That's not terrible language, it's not as great as it could be, but there's conflicting language in Section 6, towards the end of that ordinance, that says this development order shall not be construed as an agreement on the part of Sarasota County to exempt the applicant from later regulations. I think it would be better if it says that Sarasota County will not exempt, and the ordinance or regulation did not impair or otherwise frustrate the development herein improvement. I don't see how you can change the stormwater regulations and not face an argument that you've impaired what was approved in this ordinance if you approve it today. I also wanna point out that in the UDC, Section 124-39, Subsection C4, in applicant, in application review for his rezone, one of the criteria is whether proposed change in rezoning would have an impact on availability of adequate public facilities, whether proposed change will create a drainage or flooding problem. And I would say you can't answer that question at this point in time. And in fact, the staff report on page E-11 states, the final stormwater concurrency determination, which is whether or not they meet the current level of service standards, is deferred until the time-of-sight development. Now, there's always a fight between what can be done now and what can be done later, but I argue you don't have enough information in front of you tonight to know that you are protecting the health, safety, and welfare of existing residents in this county. And extraordinary events are happening very quickly. We've had 2,000-year storms in the last three months. Definitely unusual, definitely unexpected, but it happened, and it clearly, I believe, will happen again. And so protect our residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Mary Mann, followed by Lee Edserly, I believe, and then Beth Erwin, followed by Stephen Erwin. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Long day today. My name is Mary Mann. I am the daughter of a developer. My dad was IZ Mann, who developed the Country Club of Sarasota, Longboat Towers, Longboat Harbor, Sarasota Harbor, and a lot of other harbors that I don't even remember the names of. So you must know, then, that I am not against developers, and I am not against developers making money. I like development. I live at, in Revo Lakes, and I'm very happy there. I am, I think that there comes a time when you have to say, how much is too much? If we're talking 6,500 homes, couldn't we reduce that? With all of the subcontractors that Mr. Neil invited to come here today to tell you how wonderful their business is, they will still have lots of business if we don't have 6,500 homes, and if we don't have buildings that go up to 65 feet. So it's not a question of them becoming bankrupt, it's a question of how much is too much. And so I'm asking you to please keep that in mind. Now, my phone went blank, okay, here. One of the things my dad taught me was how important it is for a developer to be a good neighbor, and to keep all of that in mind when you're doing development. Before I came today, I told people that I was coming, and they said, why are you even going? It's just a fait accompli, they don't listen to the consumer anymore, they don't listen to citizens anymore. And, being naive, maybe, I said, of course they will. And the last one, number 59, gave me a little bit of reassurance that maybe we could make a difference. For example, I attended all of the meetings in Revo Lakes on these homes, and we were told at first it would be a 100-foot setback, which was okay, but then it was changed to a 50-foot setback. Why? Why can't we have a 100-foot setback? Will that impact the number of homes? If it's 10 less homes, isn't that okay? How much is too much? Originally, we were told that there would be shrubbery and everything put in between the homes where the new homes are going, and then we were told, no, the development will occur first, which means that all the dust and dirt and everything that's going to go on with the construction will come into Revo Lakes. So we're asking simply, let's put in the forestry that we need to protect the homes, and that would do a big service to us. Sarasotans in all areas, as you know, are frustrated and angry. The last election bears that out, and there's more to come. I don't think that the hurricanes, the six that came, are the end-all and be-all. Yesterday, there was a rainstorm, a simple rainstorm, and when I turned off of Clark to come home at 5 o'clock to go on Ibis, it was, all the trenches along the side were filled and about to flood over the street. So that was just a rainstorm, and rainstorms are going to continue. And despite the fact that some people say climate change is not here, and it's not coming, and want to turn the blind eye to it, it is here. We can tell by the heat, we can tell by the flooding and everything else. So I'm asking you to please, please, be good neighbors with us, we'll be good neighbors with you, and every, there will be enough for everyone to go around, for Mr. Neil to do his homes, which I'm not opposed to, but in a reasonable number and in a reasonable way, so that if you could at least negotiate that, have something in writing so that we know there will be a 100-foot setback, there will be forestry put up, then we can be very comfortable with the good homes that Mr. Neil will build. And I thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, Lee Edserly, followed by Beth Erwin, followed by Stephen Erwin, and then Beth Binkley Sayer. Good evening.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Lee Edgerly, and I am a member, a resident of Revo Lakes, where we are a conservation community. I have three concerns that I'd like to address with you. First, I'm gonna begin by saying we, as residents of Revo Lake, would like to see a pause on this project, primarily because we'd like to reach resolution with Neil Properties ab-. Neal Properties about this buffer zone between the two properties, so that we have an assurance of what the final agreement will be before construction begins. As it works now, we have no assurances. We've been told to be quiet, not raise any objections, or we won't get anything. Their exact words were, "We work with the people who work with us. If you don't work with us, you won't get anything." I don't like being bullied by anybody. The second thing is the rainfall. Before Debbie came, all of the drainage ditches up and down Hawkins, up and down Ibis, and down Dove were already full of water. It's because we've had months of heavy rain, and the ground is saturated, and the 10-inch, or 12-inch, or even 18-inch standard doesn't make a lot of sense when the ground is already saturated. And whatever we consider for the future should include an understanding of how much rain leading up to a storm saturates the ground, and therefore impacts the runoff and the likelihood of causing flooding in our community. As was mentioned earlier, our community did experience some minor flooding because the ground was saturated, the retention ponds were already full, and the drains down too, the retention ponds were backed up. Clark Road and Ibis was flooded at the corner. It was under four inches of water. Ibis, going all the way up to Hawkins, was flooded left and right on the night that Debbie blew over Sarasota. She was a slow-moving storm, and that's the reason why we got so much rain. There is nothing in history that can predict what is going to happen in the future in terms of the storms that will affect our area. But we can be assured that it almost certainly will be worse in the future than it has been in the past. And finally, traffic. We're all very concerned about the amount of additional traffic down Ibis that 6,000 homes would create, and the danger to existing residents that an endless stream of heavy trucks bearing building materials and dirt create for everybody going up and down the streets. School buses stop on that street, people use that street to commute to work, and in 2019, there were 33,000 accidents involving large trucks in Sarasota. 175,000 people were injured. Seventy-eight percent of them were drivers of other vehicles. We do not want the residents of Revo Lakes, or any of the residences along Ibis, to be victims to this kind of tragedy. Thank you very much. I will ask, please, that you pause until you have all the information that you need that protects the people of our communities and anybody else who comes along after us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Beth Irwin, followed by Stephen Irwin, followed by Beth Binkley Sayer, followed by Kristin Fanberg.
Good evening. My name is Beth Irwin, and I'm a resident of Revo Lakes. I have followed the 3H Ranch development closely, and the request in front of you today is simply too much. Open space reduction from 50% to 33% is too much. Green belt reductions from 500 feet to 50 feet is also too much. Increase in density of 1,122 additional units is too much. It really is too much. And why have a code if the rules don't have to be followed? Your staff does not think that the applicant has made the case for these reductions, and we, as neighbors, don't think these excessive requests should be considered. In regards to the open space reduction request from 50% to 33%, your staff has stated that the applicant is required to clearly demonstrate that 33% of proposed open space area creates a new ecological benefit, and this has not been demonstrated. Your staff is of the opinion that compliance with all the requirements noted in the UDC to allow green belt exceptions along Clark and Ibis perimeters has not been fully met. This subject site is located with the Village/Open Space RMA with a land designation of a village. This land use is meant to incorporate open space and preserve environmentally sensitive areas both onsite and offsite. Yet, we have all these big reductions and grossly excessive density. If you're going to allow 1,122 additional units extra density, then the open space should be 50%, and the buffer should be 500 feet. The Sarasota 2050 master plan allowed East County development, but with stringent rules for clustering, commercial activity, and density, and an absolute stipulation of fiscal neutrality. It has been said that the county's leadership commitment to the 2050 plan has totally eroded, to the point where all that remains today are the density bonuses to developers. I have also been to the neighborhood meetings for Revo Lakes, and at the last meeting, it was discussed with several Neal staffers that this land is being parceled off. Mr. Neal may be building wonderful homes, but Mr. Neal is not developing this entire property. And the property that abuts my neighborhood, Revo Lakes, is up for grabs right now. And I know one of the developers that wants it was trying to get a zero-foot buffer, and he was trying to represent our neighborhood in having meetings with Neal Communities for that. So we're not even talking necessarily about a 50-foot buffer. So I just want people to understand that this entire area is not being developed by Neal. He may be a wonderful builder, but there are lesser developers that it's up for grabs for. So we're asking you to show your leadership today. Please deny the request of the green belt reduction, deny the request for the open space reduction. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Stephen Irwin, followed by Kim Binkley Sayer, followed by Kristin Fanberg, followed by Alexis Sayer, and I only have a few more cards left, so if anybody would like to speak on Agenda Item Number 60, please get your cards to the clerk, if you would. We're coming to the end here. Mr. Irwin?
My name is Dr. Steve Irwin. I'm a resident of Revo Lakes. I think what we've heard all day today, it brings up, for me, a summary of two words. Number one, caution, and number two, flooding. It's on everybody's mind. We've all been told that there's codes in place in this county to make sure that development doesn't encroach on neighborhoods around them and flood them out. We've learned a couple of things about that. One, that those codes date back to 1992. You know, as a doctor, I wouldn't use 1992 medical training and say, "In order to lose weight, you need to eat Snack Wells and Diet Snapple," nor should you use those kind of things to prevent people from having to use airboats to get their stuff out of their houses. We've also learned that, from the Public Works, that this is not the result of shoddy work or bad maintenance. And I quote, "Public Works staff will further evaluate the data collected from Monday, August 19, inspection of the pipes, but at this time, nothing was found in the pipes that would have exacerbated the flooding from Hurricane Debbie in the area of Palmer Boulevard and Lorraine Road. Public Works staff will continue to evaluate the areas of concern around the county to identify the root causes of flooding from Hurricane Debbie and potential means to mitigate future flood impacts." Sarasota County drainage model has been unable to keep up with the pace of development. As everybody said, we've had two 100-year storms, one in June, one in August. Does anybody think it's going to take another 100 years to get another storm like that? I've lived all over Florida, you know, across both coasts, and I can tell you that the worst time that I've seen any kind of rainfall was when we lived in India Atlantic back in 2008. They had a tropical storm that was not like Debbie. It didn't take off and keep going north. It sat over India Atlantic, over Brevard County. They got 30 inches of rain, and you know what happened to our house? Nothing. We didn't get any flooding, because we didn't have a house that was in a former wetland. So if you build houses in wetlands, they're going to flood. I mean, it doesn't take the hardcore scientists that we've had come up here earlier and tell us, you know, about, you know, water. And we know that if you build houses on wetlands, they're going to flood. It happened at the developments in Sarasota County east of I-75. Like I said, the two words that we need to think about are caution and flooding. With caution, I think we need to proceed carefully. We've not had flooding because we've had land area for the water to go. The proposed area that this gentleman's selling, the only inhabitants there have been cows, but when we drove by that area, those cows were up to their ankles or further with water. So the water didn't dissipate from Hurricane Debbie. At that time, Tropical Storm Debbie for us. So to think that going in and putting in a bunch of concrete is going to solve the problem, I don't see how that's the case. The other issue is that in their proposed map, they do have lakes that come right up to our community in Revo Lakes, but more importantly, they come right up along Ibis Road. And Ibis Road, as we've said, is a two-lane road. It's a road that is the only way in and out for Revo Lakes, for Saranowa, for Saranowa Lakes, for Grand Park. If that road floods, we're not getting in and out unless Mr. Neal, like I said, is going to give us some airboats to get in and out. What we're requesting is that there be a stipulation that requires there be a berm of at least six feet. That way, we can ensure that any water accumulation from the 3H property doesn't encroach on Revo Lakes, doesn't encroach on Ibis, which is the main in-and-out street for multiple communities. So we would like to proceed first with any caution, but if anything, we would request that there be a six-foot berm to make sure that that water doesn't flow over to us or any of the neighboring communities. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Kim Binkley Sayer, followed by Kristin Fanberg, followed by Alexis Sayer, followed by Rick Sayer, and then followed by Tom Matrullo, and that's all the cards I have. If somebody wants to speak on Agenda Item Number 60, please get your card to the clerk.
Good evening, ma'am.
Hi there. Kim Binkley Sayer. Know that you've had a very long day today, and appreciate the time that you've given us to try to put our thoughts on the record. I'm Kim Binkley Sayer. I'm the HOA president of Saranowa, and I'm here today to ask that in the interest of public safety, you include a stipulation that there be no construction entrance onto the proposed development from Ibis Road. Ms. Paula Wiggins indicated at the Planning Commission that the board has the authority to require such a stipulation. She also stated that there are not any plans to widen Ibis Road. So Ibis Road is just going to stay just the way it is. So Revo Lakes is located just north of Hawkins and has 107 homes. Saranowa has 192 lots with its only entrance off of Ibis, and directly south of that, we have Saranowa Lakes with 92 lots. And then we have Grand Park, which is Mr. Neal's 1,097-home lot development, which is approximately one-third sold out. And then south of Grand Park is the new development that has 1,021 lot residential development. That pet really needs to change his name on that. But all these developments are accessed by Ibis Road, and less than half of the home sites for these four developments have been delivered. Now, we had video traffic counts collected by an independent data collection firm, NDS, and the copies were provided to your staff. The video aspect allowed them to identify the size of the vehicles. The counts were collected on a 24-hour basis, May 7 through 9, and there were a number of interesting findings that came from the report. First, the traffic counts are 25% greater than the number provided by the Neal Organization at our neighborhood meeting on May 29. Second, between 8:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m., there are an average of over 61, over 31, six-wheel or larger vehicles per hour currently traveling on Ibis Road. So that means every two minutes, a large vehicle travels on Ibis Road. Some hours, there are as many as 40 or 41 such vehicles on Ibis. For perspective, in the three minutes that I'll be speaking with you, two such vehicles would have gone down Ibis Road, and each speaker that presents to you this afternoon can say the same thing. This is very significant because Ibis has no bike lanes or sidewalks from Hawkins past Saranowa Lakes. A typical dump truck sits about 11 and 1/2 feet to 12 and 1/2 feet off the ground, and when meeting another such vehicle, the truck's driver's attention is focused on the approaching truck and not the bicyclist or the pedestrian traveling on the road. When nothing but a ditch on either side of the road, this puts the bicyclist or pedestrian in the most precarious and dangerous circumstance. In the Grand Lakes or Grand Park document filed with the county, the Neal Organization projected delivering 70 homes a year. In the 3H proposal in front of you today, they have projected delivering 2,079 homes by 2030. At the May 29 neighborhood meeting, Neal indicated that the first home would not be delivered until 2026. That means that approximately 500 homes per year will be delivered between '26 and '2030 at 3H, more than seven times the volume of the current situation. If a construction entrance is allowed on Ibis, and all else remains equal, the 31 vehicles per hour expands to an additional 220 per hour, and disaster is all but guaranteed. Even a traffic number half of the projected increase contemplated in this presentation means a very dangerous situation for children and other residents of the existing communities whose only access is from Ibis Road. And this analysis does not even consider the impact of the soon-to-be-opened, you know, new development of the 439 acres down the street. 3H has many other areas that could be used for construction access. There's frontage on Clark, Lorraine, and Dove. There are 10 other access points planned for 3H other than Ibis Road. Access off of Clark Road under the supervision of FDOT would make a lot of sense. Neal had hired the Sheriff's Department to provide patrols for the purposes of issuing speeding tickets on Ibis on an occasional basis. However, this does not address the permanent safety issue of overburdening Ibis Road with construction vehicles. It was a nice gesture before this meeting. The Sheriff's Office stated that the contract expired.
Thank you. Next up, Kristin Fanberg, followed by Alexis Sayer, followed by Rick Sayer, followed by Tom Matrullo, and that's all the cards I have.
Hi, my name is Chris Fanberg. I'm a resident of Saranowa, and I'm going to finish this that Kim started. Neal has hired the Sheriff's Department to provide patrols for the purpose of issuing speeding tickets on Ibis on an occasional basis. However, this does not address the permanent safety issue of overburdening Ibis Road with construction vehicles. It was a nice gesture before the meeting. The Sheriff's Office stated that the contract expired May 31 and was not renewed. In the May 29 neighborhood meeting, Neal indicated that he had...
Pause. Can you pause one second?
It came off. Did you see it?
It did bounce off. I just thought it was...
You see it?
That has something to do with the...
Here's the popping noise.
Thank you.
Yes.
You know, I just like to walk around with a microphone.
Sorry for the pause.
Thank you. Sorry about that. In the May 29 neighborhood meeting, Neal indicated that he had some ability to enforce certain rules on his vendors by fining those that violate those rules. Clearly, Neal is in a position to direct all construction traffic away from Ibis Road. We have asked Neal for a commitment to stipulate that there be no construction access to 3H from Ibis Road. However, he has not been able or willing to make such a commitment. We recognize that there is an incentive to move traffic from Dove Avenue to Ibis Road, as number three of the Transportation Section of the DOCC Development Order conditions makes the... Order conditions makes the developer responsible for a comprehensive plan amendment for widening Dove Avenue if the biennial transportation monitoring report shows such a need. No such requirement is put on the developer for Ibis Road. Many of the thoughts expressed here were included in a package delivered to each of you at the beginning of our presentation and included the traffic report and other documentation referenced today. The residents on Ibis Road will be looking constant, will be looking at constant construction trucks daily without 3-H for many years. We want Ibis to be safe, and adding the 3-H construction traffic makes it much worse. We encourage you to include the stipulation that was provided to you or some other stipulation that includes this provision outlined therein. And I just wanna say, I don't know if you're familiar with Ibis, but Saranowa is right in the middle of the road. I bought my home there six years ago. And there were only two neighborhoods on Ibis, Saranowa and Saranowa Lakes. I could ride my bike on Ibis. Now, Revo is north of us, so we're not too affected by them. But the construction trucks, I hope you're watching this because it's insane. We have school buses, we have kids, there's no shoulder. They're going by our neighborhood at 60 miles an hour, starting at 6:00 in the morning, right till 6:00 o'clock at night. Anybody wants to come and have a cup of coffee with me? I'll meet you in front of our neighborhood. You would be shocked. I don't know, there's not much we can do about the speeding, I guess, but it is so dangerous. I used to ride my bike there. There's no way. There's no shoulder. And there's hundreds of homes still coming. So I beg you guys, please do not let them use Ibis for construction anymore. It's already really, it's really bad. There's a lot of people that have spoken here today that talk about what a wonderful guy Neal is. And I don't think that's the point. I'm not washing windows or doing anything or making any money. I just don't want someone to get hurt. And the construction vehicles are out of control already. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Alex, Alexis Sayer, followed by Rick Sayer, followed by Tom Matrullo. And again, that's all the cards I have.
Hi, I'm Alexis Sayer. No comment. I'm just IT support.
Okay. Next up, Rick Sayer, followed by Tom Matrullo.
I'm Rick Sayer. I have signed a card. I'm Alexis's father. I live in Saranowa. I've not been paid to be here. I didn't even get a T-shirt. I've known Pat for 25 or 30 years. I've worked with him professionally. I've worked with him politically. And I like Pat. Pat's a good guy. But this development gives me great concern. With all the speakers that we've had today concerned about the overbuilding in Sarasota and the impact on, that has had on the flooding and so forth, it just seems odd to me that we are thinking about a 20-something percent increase in density and a 35% reduction in open space and a 95% reduction in buffer. That gives me concern. But my real concern is, as the people right before me spoke, is the construction traffic on Ibis. The traffic now, as you saw in the video and as people spoke to, is quite fast. If you add seven times that much traffic, I don't think you're gonna have an issue with speed. You're gonna have so much construction traffic on there, it's gonna look like I-75 heading north at I want to encourage you to adopt a resolution that restricts construction access off Ibis. There are several people here talk about 3-H and raising a family and first-time homebuyers and so forth. For homebuyers, for kids being raised in 3-H, or for Grand Park, or Streza, or either of the Saranowa communities, I certainly hope those kids don't plan on riding their bike up Ibis to Twin Lakes Park. There's a number of...
Wolf, please.
Oh, there we go. There's a number of other access points, 10 access points into the 3-H development that are not on Ibis. We're showing them here on... Sorry. And just to give you a sense of the construction traffic, what it would be like to try to drive, to ride a bike on Ibis, here's just a couple of pictures of, up close and personal, of that video you saw. There's no way you can walk along or ride a bike along Ibis with that kind of construction traffic. And again, the communities now, and certainly the communities in the future, will have a lot of children. And I would suspect, I would hope that those children plan to use Twin Lakes Park. I spoke with Pat briefly during the break about restricting construction access off Ibis. And what I got out of the conversation, maybe not what Pat meant, but what I got out of the conversation is the cost to put a construction interest or to restrict construction and direct it somewhere else in the development is minuscule. I don't know that I can comprehend that many decimal points, that many places beyond the decimal point as to what that cost would be compared to the overall cost of this development. So it's not a significant cost to Pat. Many people have talked about Pat, and I found this myself, not taking shortcuts. Pat, let's not take shortcuts on the construction traffic on Ibis.
Sir, just keep your, keep it, we're the policymakers.
I implore you to ask Pat not to take any shortcuts and direct construction traffic somewhere other than Ibis. Again, I implore you to adopt the stipulation that has been provided to you or something similar. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Tom Matrullo. And again, that's my last card.
I'm not sure how this thing works. Do I just put it on... I have an image that I want to share.
Here, sir, let me see.
Oh, is it this?
Right, yeah. So if you just place it here, it'll recognize. But if you want to clip your image.
Okay.
Yep.
Good evening, Commissioners. Tom Matrullo. I'll be mercifully brief. After sitting through this hearing, it seems worth asking whether Pat Neal might be locked into a business plan that is facing serious questions after the revelations of our recent storms. The methodology of planning has to be rethought and reexamined in tandem with developers like Pat Neal, who upon, upon whom it is incumbent to creatively look to a future very different from the past scenes of success. I just want to show you, if I can, this image that is on the, whatever it's called, that is from Mr. Neal. And then below it, if you can see this, it's a little bit hard maybe for you to read in this light, but that is the FEMA flood map for the exact same development. And the difference is pretty striking. So all the blue in the AE floodplain means that it should all be greenway. Now, the applicant may be proposing to change the development, the designation, from AE to AH, but that would be subject to a submittal and an approval by FEMA. Even if this could be changed, the current FEMA maps are official, adopted, and should stand for this rezone. As such, the answer to the last question should be zoning should be based upon the official county flood maps, not a separate analysis by the developer who has not been approved, and it should be reflected as such on the official maps. So in summation, Debbie for Sarasota County can be a debacle or an opportunity to return to rational and humane community. Thank you.
Thank you. The only other cards I have are applicant cards. For the record, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on item number 60 that didn't have the opportunity to be heard? Madam Clerk, do you have any further cards? Seeing none, then I'll recognize the applicant for five minutes of rebuttal.
Hello, Mr. Chairman. I'm Pat Neal. I'm gonna take one of the five. Keep in mind that unlike any of the other properties discussed today, this property has either 19 or 20 feet of fall from the top to the bottom. As to the most recent speaker, we, of course, will do a Lomar letter of map revision as we raise all the land, two or three or four feet above the current land, to create the lakes to detain the stormwater. And we have lots of land for the stormwater, as Jeremy will describe. As to the last two, if you'd help me with Mr. Brown to finish the MERT, I need condemnation authority from Mr. Spencer. I would finish the MERT. Otherwise, I'm committing to you at this moment that we'll spend about $600,000 for construction road on Wakiva going to the west to intersect with Ibis to meet the requirements of the folks at Saranowa. We apparently had a misunderstanding as to Revo. We wanted to enhance their buffer and put on more bushes on their very good buffer. And I'll commit to you under oath that we'll work with the Revo people before we leave this room tonight to make sure there's a clear understanding as to the Revo buffer. We'll rebut the matters having to do with flooding and open space and the remaining items having to do with the buffer. And I'll introduce Katie to do that.
Good evening, Commissioners. Katie LaBarva-Stantec. I'm gonna just touch on green belts very quickly. There are specific provisions in the Unified Development Code that allow the applicant to request modifications to green belts. Our application materials address each and every request for modification in great detail. And the request that is before you is in full compliance with the Unified Development Code. Since the Planning Commission hearing, our team adjusted the green belt adjacent to only one of the affected OUU1 property owners because that party voiced a concern. And we responded to that concern by providing that 500-foot green belt in that location. And so we were, we heard his concern, and we addressed it. And it's reflected in the master development plan. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Alec Koffner regarding environmental.
I'm Alec Koffner with Kim Lee Horn. I just want to clear up a few things about the reduction in open space from 50 to 33%. We're doing this through providing net ecological benefit. So what that means is that after the project's done, the ecology's going to be better than it was before we started. And we worked a lot with staff. And it took some time. And there was a lot of back and forth, give and take. But now staff supports our proposal. And I think that's important because I heard a few people say that staff did not support us, but they do. So I want to talk about what the county won't get if we just do the standard 50% open space. So we will just have to meet the county minimum standards. The county won't get 234 acres of additional habitat creation. The county won't get 158 acres more of mediation, which is wetland enhancement. The greenway area will not be restored. It'll stay as improved pastures. And then the corridors, the county minimum for corridors, wildlife corridors, is 50 feet. We're gonna have a minimum of 100-foot corridor with a...
Sir, can I, can I pause?
Sure.
Pause the clock for a second. Pause the clock, if you would. Commissioner, under his question.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I apologize. And I just, I wanted to go back because you're talking about creation of natural habitats in an area where they didn't otherwise previously exist. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So help me understand, you know, I very much enjoy biology. It's my background. Talk to me a little bit about, you know, as the land exists today, for Mr. Hale and his family, you have cattle on there presumably grazing. I'm not gonna say it's a dust bowl, but it's pretty close to that. Is that right?
Okay.
Okay. So can you help me understand the process just a little bit? And I apologize. I know it's late, but this is very important for me. Anytime we have the ability to enhance natural habitats or create additional natural habitats or wetland mitigation, that's something, if you could just maybe take a minute and help me understand that process, it would be greatly appreciated.
Absolutely. So just to clarify, the area is maintained as really good improved pasture now for cattle grazing. But in order to do that, you have to eliminate the native habitat there, right? So it's, what we're proposing to do is take those areas that are now beheading grass pasture and then restore those through plantings, through long-term management of those areas. And what we're gonna do is we're gonna take like those existing wetland areas that are gonna be preserved, and we're gonna make habitat, upland habitats between those areas to provide contiguous habitat, right? So these corridors that we're creating by creating this native habitat will provide areas for wildlife to utilize, to forage, to move through the site, you know, so the trees that will be there that are not there now. So there's a lot of benefit in doing this restoration. And then the enhancement of wetlands, right now, those wetlands out there, you know, they've been ditched and drained historically for the ag use. There's not a lot of zonation, not a lot of diversity. They're basically just grassy areas that get a little water in them from time to time. We're gonna take those areas, we're gonna restore them, we're gonna, we're gonna plant them, we're gonna put a buffer, a vegetated buffer around them, and we're gonna make them into some, something that they're not right now. So there's a lot of benefit in what we're proposing to do here. So does that answer your question?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. All right.
Ed Vogler, thank you for listening so attentively. We're very grateful. I can only say something very briefly here, but some of the witnesses testified as if some facts are like unassailable. For example, rain levels are increasing. This is purely anecdotal. There's no empirical evidence that that is true. Worse in the future than in the past, it's not reflected by the data. If you look at this data, this is Sarasota County data. I just took it off your webpage. There's 110 years of rainfall data. And as you can see by the chart, it isn't increasing. And maybe it will, but it hasn't over 110 years. You have all of this data every month for 110 years. You should look at it.
Once again, Jeremy Arnold with Atwell. 25 seconds just to close. The drainage, once again, natural topography across the site. We're gonna take advantage of that. We're gonna meet all the standards, the state standards by SWIFTMAD and the county standards by Sarasota County Stormwater Department. And any development that we encroach into any FEMA zone gets addressed during that design. All of it gets modeled out and proved out.
Jeremy forgot to say 19 feet from top to the bottom.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks. Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Cutzinger, I have you on the board.
Yeah. Mr. Neal, if I could just ask you a question or two.
Of course, Commissioner Cutzinger. I was hoping you'd ask.
You spoke very quickly there. I know you had brief time. One more time, talk about the $600,000 to build the road.
Katie wrote out the stip if you'd like to offer it. As you know, I've done a public-private with Sarasota County to build a partial road on Wakiva, which is called Starry Night, I believe, in Sky Ranch. We've built about 1100 or 1200-foot road on the north side of the school board's $128 million public investment. I said that I would spend the $600,000 necessary to continue that construction road and maintain it from its current termination to Ibis as part of the stipulation of this hearing. And that I would meet with the owners to make sure I worked with the details before I left this room.
Is that a stipulation that's... Is that a stipulation that's in this agreement at this point?
Counselor, will you share it with somebody in the commission?
You have to read it into the ground.
Good evening, Chairman. Katie LaBarre with Stantec. I'm prepared to read into the record a proffered stipulation regarding construction traffic that you, you as the board, can consider. So I'll just dictate now. During the period of project development, the project shall maintain not less than three options for construction traffic, including Lorraine Road and Dove Avenue. The developer shall instruct vendors to utilize construction tra... I'm sorry. The developers shall instruct vendors to use Lorraine Road and Dove access, Dove Avenue access points only.
Can we, can you put that on the, I mean, just to make sure that we get this in the record correctly?
Need to rewrite it. I'm going to rewrite it so it's not so messy.
Okay. Are you, yeah, and we'll let our county attorney take a look at that. Okay, thank you for that, and... I'm another, I'm sorry. Mr. Chair, what was your?
No, there's a question whether we should take a break or not, and I think we can do it. All right, five-minute break. That's it, five minutes. We'll be back in five minutes. All righty, we're, all righty, we're, all righty, we're back. If we could settle in, please. All right, where are we?
We're in final drafting mode, so I could have 30 seconds to write it out so you know. That'd be great.
We're live, so...
While she's writing that out, Mr. Neal, may I...
Yes. Commissioner Cutzinger...
Yeah, Mr. Neal, while she's writing that out, may I ask you just another question on that?
Yes, sir.
You made a comment about the buffer.
Yes.
Can you just expound on that for just a second as well?
Well, I've tried to find all the REVO people, but they left.
Okay.
Are you really there?
[inaudible].
Hey, Katie. What I said was I would reach agreement with them in this room before I left. They have a very nice existing buffer with lots of plants and trees on it. We think it's a waste, Commissioner Cutzinger, to build a separate buffer over here, and it creates water and mosquitoes and all the rest between the two buffers. So our consistent promise has been that we'd like to re-vegetate their buffer to be nice and bigger and to fill in all the holes so they didn't, to use the vernacular, so they didn't see nothing on the other side. And if, are you writing, Katie? We need to have an irrigation system in place, but we know there is one, so we can plant it now so the trees will start to grow between now and the two years of development. So that conceptually, that's what I was trying to offer.
I understand. Would the 50-foot green belt buffer remain?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I was told we were ready to go. Are we ready to go?
30 seconds. It's up.
Commissioners, forgive my handwriting. I did it in haste. I will read this proposed stipulation into the record if you would like. During the period of project site development and construction, the property owner shall maintain not less than three options for construction traffic, including Lorraine Road and Dove Avenue. The property owner shall instruct vendors to direct construction traffic to Lorraine Road and Dove Avenue.
Questions, comments, concerns from the board? Commissioner Rainford?
Yeah, no, I think that's appropriate language. That was one of my top concerns here in the presentation, just knowing the athletic fields that are on Ibis. I know we already straightened out Ibis, which was a much-needed improvement, but with all the children there, just more of the dump trucks, and the enforcement matter is a challenging matter because there's other developments on that street. If an AC contractor goes down the street, they could be going to Saranova, they could be going many different places, so I think that, but if, based on the 30 or 40 vendors that spoke today, I think that you have a pretty good relationship with them, and I would just encourage you to reach out specifically to those that are hauling dirt and hauling dumpsters, the bigger trucks, and try to detour them towards the Lorraine Road, which I hope to see built all the way down south here soon.
Okay. Any, I have no one on the board here for thoughts or questions. Any further questions of the applicant? Thank you, thank you very much. Any further questions of staff? I should have taken a minute at the end of this because a lot of people have left here today, but I truly appreciate the pleasant and thoughtful and polite comments from everybody today. I know some of these things can get super passionate, especially a project of this magnitude. So again, I appreciate the polite nature of everyone today. I know it's been a super long day. So, thanks to all. With that, I'm going to do going once and going twice to close the public hearing. Seeing nothing, no further questions from the applicant, no questions for the staff. I have no further cards, then I will close the public hearing and hear the will of the board on 60A and B. Commissioner Rainford?
On 60A and B with adding to be the additional proffered stipulation that was just on the screen, I move approval.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second by Commissioner Cutzinger. Commissioner Rainford, do you care to speak to it?
Yeah, I mean, we've had a, it's been a long day, a lot of testimony here from the public. I think from the general consensus was that, you know, we're pretty fortunate here in Sarasota to have somebody that has taken the public's concern at heart, made adjustments, been thoughtful in terms of the buffering where it needed to be, thoughtful in terms of adding to the preserve land, enhancing it from just an open field, and then this last portion here to protect the children that are playing on Ibis. Had a brother-in-law get a speeding ticket from the sheriff's enforcement here recently. But I think that when we look at the 2050 plan, these things don't happen on a whim. They're well-planned out. You look at Lorraine Road, which we've had extensive discussion on, and how that's going to be planned out, and infrastructure going in first. I think this is an example of infrastructure that'll go in first and not after the development. And that's what we've been asked to spearhead as commissioners, and I think this project does that.
Commissioner Cutzinger?
Yeah, thank you. I'll take a minute here. First of all, Mr. Hale, I enjoyed your testimony. Kind of sad she's cut you short because I was really enjoying the history. And so we'll have to, I imagine it'd be a fun, be a fun, be a fun conversation to sit down at kitchen table with you and talk about the history and what you've seen in Sarasota County. I've been here 50 years, and I've seen quite a few things. And I've learned a lot. I spent, after the Debbie experience, I spent some time with some engineers just to understand. I took several hours to just really look at the overall situation, circumstance of all Sarasota County, tried to really grasp, and you can't in a few hours grasp all of the details and complexities of modeling for floods, but got a little bit better handle on what that is. And I think it's very important for us to say, and we've said it several times today, we intend to do a very comprehensive review of everything associated with this recent event, with the flooding, what happened, are there ways to improve it, what are the solutions? And we'll be very deliberative about that. We have a great staff. And then we will also be bringing in a third-party consultant, which was spoken about, so that we get very accurate, very unbiased data to, and so this has been a wake-up call. You're right. That's been used, and it's a wake-up call, and so this commission takes that very seriously. And that's one thing that will come out of this, is a very detailed study. And then we'll move forward with appropriate solutions that are possible to do. So I think that's very important to say. I think it's also very important to say that we have always said that urban sprawl is a problem. And it is a problem because if this parcel were to be cut up into pieces, all of the benefits of this unified control would be lost. The stormwater system that will be designed here will be designed for the entire parcel, and the ability that that gives them to make sure that they can design it to a capacity and to a proficiency and to a detail, it wouldn't be possible if there were several owners and several different developers. So I think having that is a very positive thing. I also think, we talk about habitat and how we, one of the things we want to do with 2050 is to preserve habitat. And in this development, not only is all the habitat being preserved, but that's being enhanced and 158 acres, I believe, is being added to the existing habitat. And when you have small homes in communities, 10, 5-acre parcels, a lot of that habitat does not get maintained. Some of it gets filled in. Peppers fill it, vines fill it, and it loses its efficiency. But when you have a master-planned community, you have someone who is responsible to not only create it, but to maintain it. And that's as important or more important than preserving the habitat. And so what's going to happen is existing habitat that's lost its efficiency is going to be enhanced, it's going to be added to, and it's going to be maintained. That's one of the benefits of master planning, and that's why, that's why this is the way to move forward with growth, smart, planned, thought-out, maintained growth. I did see that we're going to get about 900 acres of open space, but in addition, and I'm going to read this because I did want to get this in the record. It says, "In addition to the provision of a 33% open space, 3H rans will include approximately 170 acres of parks to support the recreational needs of future residents and surrounding communities." So when you add the 170 acres to the 33%, you've got over 1,000 acres of preserved lands, protected lands, open space. So I think that's important to note. I do like the idea, Mr. Neal, of having two village centers instead of one. I think that would be one of the, one of the things I've said to folks who have talked to me about development is, when we do a development east of I-75, the hope is that we will do commercial so that they will not have to go across I-75 and come get their goods and services. So it's very important to me. I was actually happy to see that we're going from the 300,000 to 370,000 square feet of commercial. And it is my hope that, you talk about one, maybe two, it is my hope that you will do two village centers, and then there'll be neighborhood centers throughout the community. So there's just a lot of reasons. And then, you know, the timing is not good, obviously. The timing is not good. But I believe that the stormwater that now sheets, just seats off of this property without any attenuation or treatment, when we develop this, it will, it will be treated, it will be held, it will be filtered before it goes out into the bay. And that's one of the things, as a county, that we've been saying for a long time, we've got to, we've got to catch this stormwater, we've got to treat it because we're having problems in the bays, and we want clean water. And I believe that that will actually help. In fact, I'm certain of it. So there's a lot of reasons for me to support this, and I'm happy to do so.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I want to thank everybody who participated in today's event, and Pat Neal. I enjoy Pat. However, I have certain issues with this property. I'm just going to go through them. I do have a problem with the decreasing in open space by 34% along with an increase in height to 85% for multifamily. Usually when you give an increase in height, that means you're going to have more green area, not less. So I think there's a contradiction there. We're giving an additional density of 20 and 1/2%, which I'm fine if we could keep the open space. Because I mean, we're talking about out east, and we're talking about, you know, one of our goals here of strategic planning was 2050, what's left. I think we do have to look very hard at the entitlements that we've given to folks and make sure we still protect the rural nature of out east. The side setbacks on the houses are going to be five feet. And the, we're going to allow the mechanical equipment to be located within 18 inches of the property line. This is 18 inches. Less than this monitor. Mow your yard, it's going to be tough. Also, the drainage easements, 18 inches on each side. We're reducing them from five feet to 18 inches. And the rear, we're going from drainage easements going from eight feet to two feet. You know, we're talking about making sure we can get drainage off the property, we're not going to hurt our neighbors, 18 inches on each side. Unless we make them concrete soils, it's going to be a little tough, in my opinion. So I find that this is inconsistent with comp plan, Chapter 7, future land use, because the houses are going to be 10 feet apart. That's from me to Commissioner Nander. And the overhangs can be in that setback, a two-foot setback, two to, you know, the houses, the eaves are going to be six feet apart. You know, and you sit there and you go, well, that's, you know, if we're going to make these affordable housing, that'd be acceptable, right? But we don't have any affordable housing. That was in there, so we're not, we're not in compliance with Chapter 9, Housing Objective 1.2. We're going to have these wonderful village centers. We're going to have a school. Teachers aren't going to be able to live here. Average, average wage for a teacher in Sarasota County is around $48,000. None of the teachers are going to be living in this. The folks living are working in those community centers, in the village centers. They're not going to be living there. So they're going to be on the roads. We've increased the traffic on both Fruitville and Clark. So I mean, I, I think we're basically, we're putting 50 pounds of building in a five-pound piece of land. And I just think that part of our 2050 goal is to protect open space, have these villages, but make sure people can live there. It's supposed to be live-work. That's what we're shooting for, but we're not doing that here. And I appreciate Mr. Neal and what he does. He does a great project. It's wonderful. I just think, and you know, and I'm looking at these modifications they're asking for. You know, the location of the northernmost access point onto Ibis Street will be redefined, could be redefined. Internal circulation will be redefined. Pedestrian circulation, sidewalks, bike lanes, trails will be redefined. Location and configuration of village centers and neighborhood centers will be redefined. Average square footage and proposed uses will be redefined. This isn't a binding site plan. This is, this is an idea. And I'm just thinking, this needs more thinking. The minimum 50-foot wide wildlife corridors, final configuration to be determined at a time of the neighborhood plans. Well, you know, the wildlife corridors are connected to both east and west and north and south. They, you know, that's where they need to be. It seems to me that the design of the plan should be, you put the wildlife corridors in to make sure you're keeping the animals, be able to go east and west and north and south, and then you work around it. You don't think you're going to move the wildlife corridor. Final acreage or developed area and open space will vary in detailed site planning. It says, "If a school is determined to be required," they're going to work with school board, that may move. Number and location of boundaries of neighborhoods and neighborhood centers may be further refined." I mean, this, this isn't tied down. Again, this isn't a binding site plan. This is a conceptual site plan. And all these modifications and stipulations... And all these modifications and stipulations we're looking for, the only thing we're tying down today is the number of units they can have and their setbacks, and the square footage of the commercial area. So I just think more thought needs to be put into it, and I think we should really look at trying to preserve our open space and our green buffers and the swales, I mean, and the water. I know that we've got brilliant engineers over there, going to figure it out, but what we've been going through lately, this, anyway, I just can't support it. He's a great developer and builds a great house, great, great projects. It should be a planned development, absolutely. I just think some more planning needs to go into it before I can accept it. Thank you.
Commissioner Nunder? No, no, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I guess, you know, I have several thoughts. I've had a lot of heartburn today, without a doubt. You've had people here in the community pouring their hearts out, sharing their stories. This is a tough one. This really is a tough one. And, Mr. Neal, you know, reputation is everything. And it certainly seems by some of the testimony from the people that you do business with, all they can speak are the highest accolades, building their own businesses, providing for their families, employees for their families, and making Sarasota, which I consider the best of the 67 counties in the great state of Florida. I truly believe that. I left for four years, and the second I could pay off my parking ticket from school, I had the U-Haul ready, I was here that same day. And I'll never look back, and I'll never leave. I have a lot of sympathy for what has happened recently in our community, and obviously, development is the question. It's everywhere. And I can tell you that as a 36-year resident, I hear it all the time, whether it's in my neighborhood, at my work, three jobs. That's what's on people's mind. What I did take out of the lack of conversation there, what we didn't really bring up, is the commercial centers. I had the privilege of growing up in Palmer Ranch. If anybody's familiar with that master-planned community, that's a wonderful facility. I love it. I still love it to this day. I'm there every day. And I think that type of a conversation, when you have control over a master development order in order to look at commercial office space, and it could be a Publix, it could be a Winn-Dixie, whatever, to encourage people to collate, do their shopping in a confined area, I think is a very beneficial thing. I do share some of Commissioner Smith's heartburn on some of the issues as it relates to how we are moving forward as Sarasota County. I fully intend for my children to grow up here, go off to school, find a job, and come right back here. And I want opportunities for their community. It's the health, safety, and wellness of our community, and I want it to be health, safety, and wellness for them. And so, you know, the biggest part for me in the emails that we got here, Mr. Neal, quite frankly, and you addressed it early, was the IBIS roadway. We had some testimony here tonight, a lot of emails about it. It seems like that particular item has been chalked off. I promised Chair, I'll be real quick. The other thing that, in my mind, I'm always looking for ways to enhance our area, Sarasota County, I think, currently does a pretty good job with 33% open space over the 550 square miles that we have here in Sarasota County. I'd like to see that number grow. I believe in being outside, and health and wellness, being what I do for a living, I think it's important we should all be outside. It's encouraging to see that your-- and you forget me his name, the biologist that you guys use, the wetland mitigation techniques, transforming an ecosystem into what was an ultimately defunct, dry area into something that's brand-new and provides a web and an eco-web. I find that exciting and very interesting. I think we should do more of that, whether it's your development, somebody else's development, or anybody else that's listening out there. I will support this today with the understanding that this development is in my district, square in my district. So I will be driving around at 7:00 a.m. perhaps, or 7:00 p.m. with a flashlight, as the stories go, engaging with the community because this is my home. And I feel very adamantly about protecting my home and all the people in my home, and not just my district, but all people in Sarasota County. And so with that being said, as you move forward, as I've always said to any developer, any order that has come through, the expectation, at least from my world, is just do the right thing. This is our home. And so pick up the phone, talk to the neighbors, live a good life, and be well. Thank you.
Okay, it's been a long day. I'll just take one minute on this. Commissioner Cutzinger, I'm super glad you touched on the master planning of this. During my tenure on this board, there's been a request from this community, I would argue a demand, for us to get away from the patchwork, leapfrogging subdivisions, and have long-term, thoughtful, comprehensive, master-planned communities, and that's exactly what's before us here today. So with that, is the clerk clear on the motion? Any questions related to that? Are we good?
So I think the only clarification was the extra stipulation was on B.
B.
Just B, right. Correct.
Everybody clear on that? Clerk clear on it? Attended motion makers, all clear on that? Any objections? Seeing none, then with that, I will call the question. I have a motion by Commissioner Rainford, seconded by Commissioner Cutzinger. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, passes four to one. All right. Thanks to all concerned. I do have one more. If we could, if you could quietly leave, I do have one open to the public. Here is Stefan K-A-L-E-V.
I believe he left, but--
Is Stefan here? I'm going to call, I'm going to call one more time. I have a Stefan K-A-L-E-V.
The clerk's also saying that he left. I don't know if he let him know or not, but he said that--
I'm sorry, say it again.
He said that the person left.
They did leave? Okay. With that, is there anything else for the good of the order? Seeing none, we're adjourned.